Get settled in real quick. Get this show on the road. They spelled my name wrong?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're missing Sylvia. Got one more? Is this just for the items? Okay. Were we waiting on Sylvia? She's not here. I know. Alrighty, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Just really quick before we get into things, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Speaking from the board, it's very important that our city gets involved, big or small, all projects, and we really appreciate you guys taking the time out of y'all's evening to come out and voice your opinions and to listen and to be heard. So, um, thank you for that. Really quick getting into the agenda, we did make a couple of adjustments. Um, we wanted to make this as efficient and as easy for everyone here. We know we have a lot of people here to talk about agenda items F, G, and H. So what we're gonna go ahead and do is, um, we're gonna knock out the first couple of items. They shouldn't take very long. And then, um, items three D and three E, we're gonna move back to the, to later in the meeting. We're gonna move three F, three G, and three H up. If anybody wants to talk about three F, three G, three H, we're gonna have a public hearing specifically for those three items. So we'll have a citizens' comment section. If you guys want to talk about those items, I would reserve your comments for those so we can listen and we'll remember what you have to say. And then citizens' comment will be for anything, uh, non-agenda related. And, uh, yeah, that should be it. Can you call the roll, please?
Christopher Toth.
Here.
Keith Alborn.
Here.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Jeffrey Estes.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Jordan Scott.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So now we'll go ahead and we'll open up citizens' comments. And so far, we have one person signed up. Sean. Okay, so you wanna, you wanna wait? Okay. Good with us? Is there anyone that would like to speak on anything non-agenda related tonight? Going once, going twice, sold. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close citizens' comment. We'll go ahead and move on to item three A. Consider an act to approve meeting minutes from August 28th, 2025, planning and zoning commission meeting.
I make a motion.
I'll second that motion. What's your motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Call the roll?
Uh, yes. Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
And David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to item three B. Conduct a public hearing. Consider an act on a recommendation granting an extension of the master plan expiration for the Reed Ranch Plan Development District, being 24.04 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey as shown on attachment two, located at 615 West Highway 71 within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and move to include on the October 21st, 2025, city council agenda for the first reading.
Good afternoon, everybody, commission members and public. This property here is located basically where 150 dead ends of 71. You got the settlement drive to the west of it. This is a PDD project that came forth about 18 months ago, so it's a planned development district. Basically, you see along there to the right-hand side, and it's kinda turned sideways, is that pond up front is along 71. What you see parallel to that blue to the pond is what's gonna be called Reed Way. The far line to the far right is gonna be Blakely Lane. So if you can envision Lowe's, that back corner, I think everybody familiar, we're trying to punch Blakely through, which will go across Broson Crossing East, which is under construction now. It'll hit that corner right there where you see that little roundabout, that's the north side of their, what I call the north side of their property. And then they'll parallel the east side. If you're familiar with the boot barn, using the pond as a reference, that front right corner where the blue is, is the boot barn. We're working through a roundabout with text thoughts. So, long story short, this has been approved basically 12 months ago. They had to come back for an extension on the PDD because we have a timeframe on extension. They're asking for another extension, and basically it's just a coordination. This development really can't go forward till we actually complete Blakely, turn the corner. And part of Blakely is, it's not only road extension, it's also infrastructure consisting of water and sewer for the site. We met with the developer today. We're real close on plans about, plans are pretty well completed, you know, acquiring some right-of-way, working through the roundabout. So the goal is they move forward, we'll do a coordinated effort, is we know we're moving forward and they're gonna continue to work with us moving forward. So basically, the request is to extend their existing PDD for one more year from today, or from November. So again, nothing's changing, just an extension of what's already been approved. Any questions? And then I guess you've gotta open the public hearing.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on item three B? No? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing then, and then we...
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, okay.
Make a motion to accept to, uh, extend their thing that they need, ED, for one year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can you call the roll?
Yes. Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three C. Consider an act to approve the auto body shop final plat being 1.19 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract number 98, located west of FM 969 within the city of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in exhibit A.
So everybody's familiar with all the development taking place there. Where you see that 23100 is where Cinderell, which is under construction, which is the different restaurants and retail. This is the corner of 71 and 969. That 24712 is an existing collision repair place. This property in question is that 78667. That's an existing, has a little existing residential house on it. It was a tract and never legally platted. So, this is the tract layout, and we're gonna have some easement stuff across it. So basically, water is Aqua, electric is Blue Bonnet, and they've gone through this with what we call a PIP, a Public Improvement Plan. We did a 24 line, sewer line extension on the, off the side of 969. So this project's been worked for about, probably a good year trying to coordinate everything. So Aqua Water, uh, Blue Bonnet Electric, and they'll eventually do a sewer line extension to get sewer to the site. So, pretty straightforward, simple plat, just cleaning up everything, and utilities are in place. So and the final drainage plan has been approved. Our site development plan is pending approval, the final plat, and they've got a building permit under review for, I think about a five, six thousand square foot, again, to be used for auto repair. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Is this an extension of the body shop that's on the corner?
So it's the same business owner. They, they bought the residential property, tear the house down.
They're gonna expand over to that?
Yeah, and they just wanna keep it two separate lots.
Okay. Oh, they do. Separate.
They wanna keep it two separate lots, but this one was never a platted lot, so now we're going through the plating process. It was a tract, not a platted lot. So kind of a formality.
Okay. Any other questions?
To meet all of our requirements?
Yes, sir.
All right. Guess we, uh, need a motion.
I make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve. Where are we approving here?
Three C.
I know we're approving three C, but we're approving the final plat, uh, of the 1.19 acres out of Nancy Blakely survey, abstract number 98, located west of Farm Roads 969 within the city of Bastrop, Texas.
I'll make a second on that.
Can you call the roll?
Yes. Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead. We're gonna skip past three D and three E, and get to those later, and we'll get to the meat and potatoes of this meeting here. So, uh, just a brief summary of what we're doing with this single property tonight. There's three steps to consider. That's why we have three different agenda items. The first would be to update our future land use map that we had addressed in May. It's important to us that when we're considering rezones in the city of Bastrop, that we're referencing our future land use map. So our staff has recommended us address the, the map first and make sure that it matches the, any potential rezones. And depending on how that goes, and then the next would be to consider approving the rezone and then a variance that is, uh, applied with that rezone that the, they're asking for. So we'll go ahead and start with three F, which would be, can, conduct a public hearing and consider an act on a recommendation to city council for a request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation from residential, uh, from neighborhood residential to residential mixed density for the area described as being .431 acres out of Building Block 12, east of Water Street, located at 1005 Pecan Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and move to include this on the October 21st, 2025, city council agenda for a first reading. This development is more commonly known as Pecan Place. We have a presentation from...
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
Yeah, Chris Kirby, Bastrop Law Group, uh, here for Rubi Crown Developers. So you'll consider the flume first, but will we be having a presentation about all three of the things that are being discussed, or is it, because since they do run hand and glove, will be, you'll be considering, although you'll vote on them, I imagine separately, they'll be considered as a whole? Is that, is that correct? That present, the staff's presentation will be...
Yeah, and for...
On the entirety of the flume, the request for the change to, from P3 to P4, and then the warrant, uh, those presentations will be single presentations covering all three topics. Is that correct, staff's and...
Is that, do you have your presentations prepared in single presentations for each topic, or do you have it on...
No, no. We were, we were actually prepared to talk about it as, as an entirety and...
Yeah, and, and that's totally okay, and I was gonna recommend for fluidity purposes, um, do it all at one time so we can all digest the information.
Fantastic, wonderful.
And then we'll go through it one at a time, so...
Excellent, thank you.
Um, we have our presentation from staff first, and then we'll go from there.
Did the slides, do you want? Okay, again, this property is located at 1005 Pecan Street. There's a location. We have zoning slash place types that regulate uses in the city of Bastrop like most cities. And I'm gonna kinda go back and forth, next for the council, and for the commission, for the public, for applicants, be sure we're all on the tenant information. So through this zoning, they're requesting a zoning change to allow use. So currently, this property is zoned P3 neighborhood, surrounded by more than P3 to the north and P5 to the west and south. This is what we, and we'll go back to it. So zoning, and that's again the overlap Mr. Kirby talked on, zoning is based on your future land use map. So you wanna, your zoning is, what's there today is zoned, but if you wanna make a change, your change should be based on what's called a future land use map. So for the past two years, that's what we've done. We've created a new, new future land use map. The new future land use map shows this area, and then we have a zoomed in, zoomed in one. So there's the subject property. So then I'm kinda getting, again, we have future land use map, zoning's based on future land use map, and then on the agenda, you have a warrant for parking. The two key things are tied together, is the zoning is based on a change to the future land use map. Again, that's the overlap. So currently, the future land use map, as we all know, we spent a lot of time working on it, a lot of public meetings, a lot of hearings. The future land use map was recently adopted in May of 2025. The existing designation for the property on the future land use map, again, is neighborhood residential, defined in our comprehensive use plan as below, to, and the proposed change is to residential mixed use density. So we've gotta change the map to that category if we wanna support the zoning change. This change would support more dense and diverse houses and options. Current residential mixed density, you see there, you see, you have neighborhood residential, which it currently is under the future land use map, again, recently adopted. Transitional single-family and low-density housing ensuring neighborhood life stability. Traditional single-family and low-density housing areas, ensuring neighborhood stability, previously neighborhood residential. And then again, you see the proposed use change is to residential mixed density, allows a blend of housing types, single-family, townhomes, small multifamily, promoting diverse living options, and it adds to missing mode options by, that's an apple there. So again, what's being proposed, let me go back, keep going here. So a future land use map, again, for education purpose, your zoning, I'm repeating myself, your zoning is based on what that future land use map spells out. So a future land use map, we just pulled this, is a community's visual guide to long-term growth, shows where new development, in this case, we got redevelopment, should go across residential, commercial, and actual areas, inform, inform zoning capital investments and policies shared. You always hear the term in zoning, that's really where the P&amp;Z Commission comes in board, which the P&amp;Z is a recommending body to city council. There's a term that's been used as highest and best use, the use that maximizes value while being physically possible, legally permission, permissible, and financially feasible. Again, this future land use map is what's gonna determine the zoning, and zoning's the local rules for land use, building types, height, lot size, and density to ensure compatibility, orderly development, and protect neighborhood character value. And again, how they regulate, that's again, we have the two different agenda items. The HBU must pass a legal zoning test in first. Zoning is a gatekeeper. If the best use isn't allowed today, owners may pursue a variance or rezoning. That's what we're going through tonight, is a rezoning based on the, the future land use map being changed. And starts with current zoning and most probable legal uses. And these are the considerations for updating a future land use map. The future land use map guides, and key word is a guiding, guiding document, sound like the foundation of development, is how land is intended to develop over time, aligning with a comprehensive plan, the city goals. And again, we all know the future land use map, the comp plan, there's a lot of public hearing input in that. So this is current, you know, sometimes you have cities that have 10 or 12-year-old maps, you know, ours is pretty up to date, recently adopted. Designations are based on existing uses, infrastructure, growth projections, environmental constraints, and the vision for Bastrop's neighborhood and commercial uses. Again, that future land use map is what the citizens, y'all, the city council painted a picture, this is what we want Bastrop to look like. We'll come to the warrant a little bit later, which is on parking. Warrants are changes considered when a property owner's potential highest and best uses differ from its current designation, or when public benefits, infrastructure, compatibility with surrounding development, support a new use. Bastrop, again, we are familiar with our B3 code. Bastrop is a farm-based code, which focuses on how development feels and fits, not just how many buildings or units go on a site. If a use or building negatively impacts what you see, hear, smell in a neighborhood, it's likely not appropriate. Changes should feel cohesive with existing neighborhood. You always got transition, but you don't want that transition to be cohesive from industrial to commercial to mixed use to residential. The key considerations for updating the future land use map is consisting with city goals, recent future land, and the flume stands for future land use map, updated in May 2025, adequate utility, streets, and infrastructure support increased intensity, compatibility with surrounding development, environmental sensitivity, and the highest and best use of the property without compromising the character or quality of life. And then I'll, I'll let the applicant kinda give their presentation, it's okay, Mr. Scott, and then before you open the public hearing. And then also, they're gonna share this information on, part of the deal the public needs to bear, and I'm sure it'll be part of their presentation, is if, depends on what happens tonight, there's also in the process a minor plat, that this property could be sort of divided into three lots with duplexes on it. But that's, again, that's a separate deal, so when this plating submittal was submitted, it allowed this, we had, so against back to the B3 code, we had no lot size requirements, and we had no, and duplexes were allowed. So that's part of, I'm assuming the presentation will be, is, you know, we wanna do this, this is what it's gonna look like, or we, we may wanna pursue this. So I guess, is there any questions to staff that we can try to clear, and again, the goal would be kinda let the applicant paint a full picture of what's being proposed, and then we can talk and have a public, public meeting on it.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff before we let the applicant speak?
And, okay?
Okay. Cool? Thank you, sir.
Looks like Mr. Moss is grappling with a technological challenge. Well, you're doing that on...
Let everyone get situated. What happened? Got unplugged, okay. Alrighty, sir. The stage is yours.
Back in business? Okay, thank you. First of all, I, I appreciate Doc and the presentation that he just made, and I think in many respects, you'll see that it runs hand and glove with exactly what we are asking y'all to consider tonight, particularly when he was talking about things like highest and best use, and we'll, we'll discuss that here in a moment. My name is Chris Kirby. I, I met all of you except unfortunately Ms. Parsons. I apologize, I didn't get a chance to say hello. Um, I'm, I own Bastrop Law Group, and I've been in Bastrop County now for 27 years, and watched this, this county as it's growing, as we all see, and see what's happening to it, you know, day by day, right? And I also need to sort of start off by mentioning that I became involved in this project when Sean Kirkpatrick, he and his wife are, own Rubi Crown Development, which is, which is the owner of this site, and, and is coming before you tonight to, um, ask you to make the, consider changes that, that Doc mentioned. And when he and I sat down the first time, I said, "The first thing you have to convince me of is that this is good for Bastrop," because I live here. And understand that Sean also lived here for a time before he took another job and moved on to the greener pasture, so to speak, and then figured out these are greener still, and is trying to get back. But as we look at this, and as you think about this, and as you consider my comments on this, see it through the prism of somebody who lives here, and somebody who desperately wants to see Bastrop stay Bastrop, regardless of how much we see the, the number of buildings that occupy the space, and the number of new neighbors who come to meet with us and become a part of this community. Pecan Place, as you can see from that, is, is the name of this development, and, and on July the 24th of 25, I always like to say, I have a great face for radio, and so when this thing showed up in Community Impact, I was horrified. Um, one thing it does show is I need more sleep. But other than that, um, we felt like it was necessary to have a, a public meeting to try to talk to anybody who wanted to come and, and ask questions about this. And so we did that over at 602 on Main Street, and had about 45 people show up, including Mr. Al, Alborn? Is that correct? Thank you. Um, to, to that presentation, a couple of city council members and others. When I stood before that group, I said to them what I will say to you, and that is, you know, I am, I am here to share with you the facts of this situation, the facts of what's happened up to this point, and, and what got us here, and created some of, candidly, some of the blowback that you guys have experienced in some measure, and, and where we are here and where we can go. Uh, to start off with that, I do need to, I, I brought these, these pictures of the old house. We have others, but these are some pictures that were taken of the, the home that was there. Yaya, I think, is what the, the homeowner was commonly known as, and anybody, anybody who's lived in this town for any length of time while she was still with us, and before she went to the great beyond, uh, couldn't help but notice that house. She was constantly in the yard tending her, her vegetation and all of that kinda stuff. It was kind of an iconic scene in Bastrop for all of us. Uh, what we didn't know was the state of the house, and when she passed away, um, if, if the realtor were here to talk to you, she would tell you that potential buyer after potential buyer saw, there was no way to save this place. It had been moved from the site where the gas station is now. It had been put on runners and literally moved back a half block, and by the time Yaya passed away, those run, those beams were busting up through the floor. The house was falling down. It was full of mold, as you can see in a number of these pictures, and it was unfortunately just not savable. A number of folks looked at it, a number of people who wanted to put business there, it was gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars to try to do anything with the home. It just wasn't savable. Now that being said, I, I also need to just, um, accept, you know, responsibility on behalf of, of those of us who wish we had 2020 hindsight and could redo history. How the demolition of this house was handled was not good, primarily because it caught the neighborhood by surprise. And so, uh, when the, the demolition company came in and put in their giant sign that said something like, "We tear 'em down and they don't come back," or something like that, and needless to say, the neighbors were, were a little horrified, might be the right word, shocked might be another. But the bottom line was that, that that was the destination for this, the, the home that was on the property, regardless of anything else that happened thereafter. And, and for anybody who buys a property, the great blessing and curse of, of Texas and our feelings about, about real estate is, we can do with what we own what we wish, primarily, you know, in, in, in large measure, and most of the time. So, the house was taken down. And now the question is, you know, what, what the impact of that was, what the results were, and what the possibilities are for that property. And I, I need to say to you on the front end, there are really only two options, um, for the property at this point, based upon whether or not you all give us the opportunity to shift this from P3 to P4 and do with it what I will vehemently tell you is, will be a fantastic project for the city of Bastrop, and a real template for things that we can do for infill development in the city going forward. One piece of which, which we'll talk about in a little while, is pervious cover that are, that Rubi Crown brought to the attention of city staff and the city council. City staff put that before the council already, and the council has already approved the idea of pervious cover. And again, I'll, I'll talk more about it in a moment, but the 50,000-foot view is, you can park on it, but water gets through it. So you don't have impervious cover with a bunch of surface runoff, you have it actually soaking into the ground where it belongs, and coming out in a much more measured fashion to deal with one of the problems that we faced with the old house, and that was the way it was, was designed. It drained into the neighbors' parking lots, and like my friend Will Jenkins was walking through standing water to get to his house, or to his office after a good rain. We will solve that problem. One of the options that does not exist for this property is single-family. It will never be a single-family home on that lot again, period, drop the mic. It's not gonna happen, okay? And as Doc pointed out to you, given the, the, I think he called it the minor plat, or I don't remember the term he used, you know, if, if push comes to shove, uh, what we end up with there will be a duplex development, something like that. You'll see Pecan Street to my left. And, and it is, it is under that minor plat, allowed with no other action required from you all, to be a three duplex development on that site. I don't think that's right for Bastrop. I don't think it's right for Pecan Street neighborhood. I don't think it's right for Chestnut. Uh, to have front, front parking and rental duplexes on that site would be something that would, would allow the business to do what businesses do, which is not lose money, but it's not the right thing for the city of Bastrop. That's what happens if we are unable to get a P4 variance on this, or a change in the, in the zoning, and an adjustment to the future land use map. On the other hand, if we, if you move, if someone makes the motion that, that we allow the P4 change, the change to the future land use map, and the variance on the parking spots is really sort of an afterthought in large measure, I think Doc would tell you that that's something that's commonly done, and, and not something that's, that's high on our list of things we have to talk about. If that were the case, though, what we'd end up with is, is a two-building, eight-unit, owner-occupied, beautiful buildings that are a perfect transition between a gas station on Chestnut and the historic neighborhood on Pecan. So then what you would have, instead of the, if I, if I, yeah, instead of duplexes with parking out front, where you would have renters, what you would have... parking out front, where you would have renters, what you would have instead for the city of Bastrop is eight new families, eight new young professionals, or whatever the case may be, living in, in units that they own, parking in back, and being a part of this community. Now, as you know, this is where it's located, and as you can see just above the Chestnut Street sign, that's the gas station on, on, on Chestnut. Across the street, Catty Corner to Southwest, I guess is what direction that is, if this is a north orientation, and I'm lousy at directions, by the way, is need for speed. Across the street is a bed and breakfast. And so, and then you've got a law office and an insurance office to the southeast. In other words, you've got a lot of commercial development right around that. But the way that the future land use map is, is, is put before you right now, it goes from commercial development boom to single family. What you'll see in a moment is that, that that's unusual. Everywhere else around the neighborhood, you've got P three to P four to P five, rather than P three to that abrupt change to P five right behind a commercial property. This is the old drainage, and, and when we did the, the meeting with the citizenry, this was a big issue. People were really understandably upset about how drainage was happening off of this property when Yaya's house was there. But look, it, it makes perfect sense if you think about it. You want your house on the high ground, and you want all the water running away from that, right? And so when this house was built many, many years ago, it was built on the high ground of the lot. Makes absolute sense. But the result was, if you see off to the bottom right corner, you had major flow going off of this lot, down into the insurance company's parking lot, down into the, into Will Jenkins Law Firm's parking lot, going off-site, and you'll notice that very little of it went to that red box, which is a storm drain system. Major problem when you're talking about some, what all of us who've been here any length of time know, can be serious standing water issues in downtown Bastrop. Okay? What's happened since then, and, and part of the, the investment that Ruby Crown has already made in this project, is they did a major drainage study, did a major engineer, and, and created an engineered drainage plan, that as you can see, keeps all of the water on-site until it runs in managed fashion down into the existing storm drain system. So rather than being a part of the problem, this becomes a part of the solution. And that's kind of in two ways. One is that they have directional flow by re, resurfacing, basically recontouring the lot to keep the water on-site, and two is that pervious drainage system that we talked about a moment ago, and I'll show you a little more about here in a second, that basically all of that light tan that you see is pervious cover. It's not concrete. When the rain lands on it, the rain goes through it, all of it? No. The, the manufacturer claims that 80% goes through, but, you know, believing a manufacturer is, you know, that sometimes they get really exuberant about what their, their product in fact will do. And so when we went to the city, what we said was, don't believe 80%, maybe we can say 50. And, and so cutting way back from what they talked about, or what the manufacturer claims it will do, but saying, in terms of the amount of impervious cover allowed on the space, can we get sort of a, a credit for about 50% of that, of that coverage? And city council has since approved, I can't remember if it's 50 or 40, but either way, we've got, we, we land within the requirements for pervious and impervious cover on this lot. And what we, what we have is, water that hits, soaks in, goes to the existing stormwater system, solves the drainage problem that was, was one of the major, there were a couple of things that were really brought up, drainage being one, traffic flow being another, we'll talk about that in a second. But that solves a huge problem that exists on that site, or existed on that site prior to the current proposed development. Oops, I hit the wrong button, sorry about that. So this, this is, is the true grid system, and what you see on top layer is what is the actual parking surface. It's a concrete paper with a hole in it, is, is the way this country boy would describe it. But then it goes into, and goes down into, and trust me, I'm no engineer and I don't play one on TV, I can't tell you the specifics of this, but obviously if you, if you need those specific, that specific information, we have the drainage plan, if the staff has not provided it to you, they have it. But it goes through a series of graded underlayment, and then is drained out to the stormwater In terms of traffic, that was another challenge, and, and when you have seen other things, like I know that there was a lot of discussion around this with respect to the crossing out on 95, and concern about traffic into the neighborhood. A couple of things that I would just like to point out with that. Number one, we're talking about neighbors here, and neighbors drive, and so obviously when you add new neighbors, you add new cars, regardless of what goes on to this property. But also what you'll need to notice is, those arrows are pointing to Chestnut Street. And if somebody wants to go to Highway 95 from this property, I dare say they're not going to go through the series of stop signs all the way down to Farm Street and take right and go another bunch of series of stop signs to get to 95. They're going to take a left out of, out of their home, they're going to take a half-block drive to Chestnut, and they're going to turn onto Chestnut and go where they need to go. Likewise, when they come home from, hopefully their job very close by here in downtown Bastrop, or their restaurant that they go to a couple of blocks away, they're coming off Chestnut, going a half-block, and turning into their parking lot. Traffic into, into Pecan Street, in other words, is effectively zero beyond that half-block. So, and by the way, in, in an eight home, you know, eight units, that'd be 16 cars, or 16 parking spaces. The concept of this is, as you can see the floor plan, each of the units, that's, that would be two units on the bottom floor, two on the top identically, there, there are two-bedroom, two-bath units with a workspace in them, because what we all figured out in the post-COVID world is, a lot of people work all or part of their time at their home, and so they'd like to be able to have some dedicated space, other than converting a bedroom. And so there's, there's a small, if you see sort of center of the building there, those, those two smaller rooms are kind of workspace areas, it'd be, it's like, in my office, for example, one of my assistants, we insisted she could get into a bigger office, but she likes what we euphemistically call her cloffus. You know, it's like, it's this tiny little space, but she can reach everything there, and she loves it. I had one of those, my favorite probably office I ever had was in my backyard, and it was 10 by 12, and I loved that place. So this isn't, it's not a huge space, but it is a workspace within the, the home. And those, those, again, I want to say, are homes. The folks that were buying them are buying them to own them, not, not to rent them. And Mr. Barrow asked me before we got started, if these could be Airbnb, and the answer is no. This would be a condo association, and, and under, under Texas law, you cannot restrict a homeowner under, by law, from renting out their place, but you can restrict how short-term that rental can be. And the, the most you can dial that back is to six months. And so the intention here is, and it'd be a condo association because there's shared space. Who's going to mow the yard? Right? So you have the association to handle the shared space, handle the concierge garbage service, so that you don't have the can sitting on the street waiting for the homeowners. All of that is taken care of by the condo association to, to keep everything in peak shape. But a, a part of that also is that, that part of the deed restriction of the sale of these units would be that they could not rent them out for anything less than the minimum the state law allows us to restrict them to, and that's six months. Okay? So unfortunately, Texas law doesn't allow us to say, hey, you can buy it, but you can't ever rent it out. We, we can't do that, by law. But we can say, you can buy it, but if you're going to rent it out, the least you can do it for is six months. We do not anticipate the folks who would buy these, buying them to rent them, we anticipate that they would buy them to live in them. Where was the architectural inspiration? Well, you can probably recognize some of those homes, because what Ruby Crown did and does, it's, it's kind of, everybody has their hobby. Sean and Robbie Kirkpatrick, their hobby is to go to small towns and see what's cool, and in this case, you don't have far to look, drive down the street. I mean, Pecan is full of beautiful houses, all of downtown is, and so what they did was drove around downtown, found archetypes of the types of homes that really seemed to be the character of downtown, and back to what the, what Doc mentioned, you know, in terms of highest and best use, which is one of those criteria that you need to decide about what you want, whether or not you want to allow us to do this, is, is this a higher and better use than duplexes? And when seen through that prism, and when you see what they came up with, essentially what, what, what Sean and Robbie did was, they said, let's take some beautiful houses along Pecan, give them to our architect, and ask that architect to create for us buildings that are going to fit perfectly into this community, into this neighborhood. Okay? And so you'll see that, for example, most of the, the, you know, the residential traffic will probably come through the back of the building, because parking isn't back, it's not viewed by the street. The parking would be behind the building, unlike the duplexes. But to the extent that anybody comes in and out the front door, notice I said door, not doors, just like any single-family home, this is a single entrance in and out. Very much like the character of the neighborhood. So accessible luxury living, you know, two, four-family homes, two bedrooms, two baths, 16 total parking spaces. I was also asked about, is this, would this be, you know, it says affordable, right? And, and I, I tend to shy away candidly from the word affordable, because, you know, in, in some people's minds, they think Section 8. This isn't government-assisted housing, obviously. I'd like to refer to it as obtainable. Because the reality is, for many of the older homes in downtown Bastrop, that is not obtainable to the average young professional. It's not obtainable to the average young family. It's not obtainable to the retiree on fixed income. But these would be. Who do we think would buy these? Interestingly enough, when we did that town hall meeting, I'll be honest with you, I walked in thinking I needed to wear a flak jacket. I didn't know what I would expect. And certainly there was, there was a, you know, a cadre of folks that, you know, I could have been God himself, and they wouldn't have been happy with me. But interestingly enough, by the end of that meeting, I had a bunch of folks coming and talking about, thank you for answering the questions on things like drainage and parking. And I had two of them come to me and say, you know what, if these things go for sale, I want to buy one of the ground floor units. Why? Because in both cases, they were widows, had, had lost their spouses, their children had moved, they're in the house that used to have six or seven people, or fi, I don't remember the numbers, but a family in them, and now they're having to mow the lawn, and deal with the house, and deal with the maintenance, and deal with all the other stuff that comes with homeownership that we all understand. They want to stay downtown. They want to stay in their neighborhood, close to their friends. And they said to me, this is the perfect solution for that. I can sell my house that I, that I had paid off in the 80s, I can take that money, I can buy one of these units, and I can stay close to my friends, and I can stay close to my restaurants, and I can do what we hope that the people do who buy these units. They buy them so they can walk to the restaurant, they can walk to their friends, they can walk across the street if they happen to go to the Catholic Church, they can be a part of Bastrop, and become very much a part of the fabric. I had another person come to me. Yeah, of course, the, the population of people who I would call young now is getting larger and larger, as I get wiser and wiser, I refuse to say older. But a guy who's, you know, a couple of decades younger than me came to me after all this, and he said, you know, and he was at the meeting as well, he button-holed me at the gym, and he said, you know, when I got out of, got out of college and moved back to Bastrop, I desperately wanted to live downtown. I'd grown up here, I'd grown up in downtown. And he said, there was no place for me to buy. There was no way in the world, with my starting salary, I could buy into anything in downtown Bastrop. And he said, I was lucky, because I knew everybody and their dog, and so I got a garage apartment from some friends of my parents, and I lived in that garage apartment until I got married. I'd like to have a couple other options than that in downtown Bastrop. I'd love it if people didn't have to get in their car, if they wanted to live in downtown, and I don't know, obviously, where each of you live. I, I don't live right in downtown, I live over, like, between Buc-E's and the rodeo grounds, but I get it. The idea of being able to live in this community, in the heart of this community, for people like active adults, like those, those widows that I talked to at the, at the community meeting, like young professionals, the gentleman who button-holed me at the gym, or young families that want a place like that to be the transition between zero kids and God knows how many. I moved into the city of Bastrop from out in the boonies in the county, because I had a great house for two, and there were five in it. I get it. Or the digital nomad who wants to live in a, in a city as fantastic as Bastrop, should say town, and be able to work in their, in their home, and at the same time walk out the door and go to Old Town or wherever they want to go for lunch. These are the kind of folks that I believe you would agree with me and say, we would love to see buying into downtown Bastrop. I would much rather see this than, than, and not to say, I lived for a lot of my life in rentals, I, I have nothing to say bad about someone who rents, rents someplace. But I also know how I treated a rental versus someplace that I owned, and I know how much I was embedded in that community, when I knew at some point my lease was going to be up and I left. So the bottom half of this slide really talks about zoning districts, and as you can see under the current code, and, and thank God that we have made the changes that we've made to, to the, the B three that was, and I just broke the podium. Oops, somebody send me a bill. But anyway, this obviously isn't nature, it's not rural. The neighborhood is down the street, and the gas station is clearly core, which I would call commercial. And then what's next? What's in between? It's that P four. Now, understand something, I mean, P four does allow, if, if somebody came to you, it does allow for things like small businesses and things like that. That's not what we're talking about, we're talking about homes. And, and when I say that, I also would, would really ask you, as you think about this project on this lot, in this city, on Pecan Street, that you think about it as this project on this lot on Pecan Street. Because part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's job is to consider each of these things individually, not, and with, with the overarching understanding of the future land use map that we'll talk about here in a second. So I really hope that you'll be thinking about it through that lens. I will also say, that I, you know, I, I admire immensely Sylvia and, and, and Doc and all the rest of the staff, and God, thank God that we have them, and we have what we've got in the city right now. I also understand some of the current constraints that they have, and what they can bring to you. Because really, if, if, what Doc's job is, is to say, what does the future land use map say? And what does the current zoning say? And if it says that it's supposed to be neighborhood, then I have to come up here and tell you to not recommend a change, because the future land use map says neighborhood, and the zoning says neighborhood. Now, part of what, and, and the integrity that he showed, and that I would expect from Doc, because he always has that, is that he also talked about those things like highest and best use, and how it fits into the neighborhood, and how it forwards the intention of the community, and how it, now it does for Bastrop what Bastrop hopes to do, the goals of the community. And as you think about that, that's when it comes to you, so that you can decide whether or not the current zoning and the current future land use map makes sense on this lot in this place on Pecan Street. And if it doesn't, then it makes all the sense in the world to be P four. This is what I mentioned a moment ago, if you'll notice that big one there in the center, that's, that's the lot we're talking about, right across the street is P five, to the northwest is P four and P five, but notice something else, right now, everywhere on that map, you see P four in between P three and P five. Everywhere, except one place. Everywhere. Transition, 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 everywhere, except one lot. And so that makes sense, that you'd go from a gas station to a mixed-use multifamily into a historic neighborhood. Makes perfect sense to do what we're asking you to do. Okay? Everywhere else around there, you see that, that as this was all sort of decked out, and all of the planning and all of the everything else, that in fact has taken place. We're asking to create some consistency and allow that to take place at 1005 Pecan as Now, let's talk for a second about the future land use map, and, and I promise you that Doc and I did not collaborate on, on, on the title, a guide, not a command, but he did use that word. The future's land use map is a guide. It's a guide for how in the macro, when we're trying to figure out sort of where we want the big chunks to be, what those big chunks will be. Will they be neighborhood? Will they be commercial? Will they be mixed? It's impossible for any future land use map to carve out every single, let me rephrase that, I don't want to pay what it would take to consider every single lot in the city of Bastrop, and whether or not it's going to be P three, four, five, whatever it's going to be, everywhere. The future land use map is a guide that is, is meant to say, in this portion of the city, this is what we by and large want to see happen. And the beauty of it is that they have entrusted you all to be able to decide differently in places like on this lot at 1005 Pecan, that is the only place in that whole area that's not transitional between the commercial use elsewhere and the neighborhood use behind. It's a guide, it is not a commandment, it's not carved in stone. It's a guide, it is not a commandment, it's not carved in stone. And while, while talking about that, if you look at the, the trajectory of how the future land use map was created, there were a number of changes, none of which impacted 1005 Pecan until the very last reading when there was, and, and I'm not sure how, you know, who knows? I mean, there's so much that goes on with these things and God only knows how it happened. But somehow what happened was, there was a change on this particular lot, used to have little hash marks that said mixed. And between the second and third reading, in other words, between y'all's recommendation to council or councils to you, or I'm not sure how it all happened, something happened and made this thing neighborhood. Otherwise, we wouldn't even be here. This would be a lot easier thing. But somehow that future land use map in the very last moment got switched over this lot. And I'm not suggesting in any way that, that anybody was sitting in the back room going, ha, 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 let's do this to 1005. I don't think that happened. I think you got big old swatches of color you're slapping on a map and somehow the hash marks got lost. I don't know. What I do know is, it was meant, it was through, through most of that time meant to be mixed use. But in the future land use map that you have in front of you, it's not. Don't know how that happened? If you like, I'd be happy, happy to show you the various iterations of that future land use map, but I didn't want to dive into those weeds that deep in this presentation. This is what we ended up with. And, and you see the one sort of dead center that's got the little yellow coming out to Chestnut and then the little purple on the side. Somebody needs to tell the gas station there in the neighborhood, according to the future land use map, because the gas station is currently yellow. And I don't think it should be. Then the rest of that block is 1005 Pecan. And, and so as you can see, again, just another color version of saying to you, there's a lot of commercial around there with neighborhood rightly behind. But the future land use map is a guide for you all to think about in terms of large scale and, and infill development. But I hope that it's a guide for you that is looked at through the prism of what is the highest and best use for this particular part of the city. You know, when, when Doc talked about this, I did make a note or two about the comprehensive plan, these are sorts of things to think about, the city's comprehensive plan, the city's goals, goals for things like neighbors and people who really invest themselves and embed themselves in the community, the neighborhood character. You can see what the neighborhood character would be if you allow us the P four, the vision for Bastrop. And all of us, I think, would agree that our overarching goal, and you hear it anywhere and everywhere all the time, from Sylvia and staff, from citizens and everybody else, our overarching goal is how do we maintain the character of this incredible city while we inevitably watch it grow? But those are the considerations in this thing that is supposed to be a guide. Zoning should be considered first, is what Doc's presentation said to you. And I tried to write it down, it said, if the best use isn't allowed today, owners may pursue variance or zoning change. If the best use isn't allowed by the future land use map or by P three zoning, then owners may pursue variance or zoning change, and that's exactly why I'm talking to you. Because the best use of this lot is that, is two of those buildings with the owners sitting in them, not duplexes. So what are we asking for? It, it's really quite simple and it's not that big a deal. We're asking for you to, to embrace the goals of the city of Bastrop, to embrace the vision for Bastrop, to embrace the idea that what we want in downtown Bastrop is neighbors and folks who will be sitting with us while we're cheering on, whether it's the Aggies or the Longhorns, or in my case, the Razorbacks, and I probably just alienated three quarters of the room. No, it's in the old Southwest Conference days, I'm safe. And don't worry, they don't win anything these days anyway. What is the highest and best use for this property? And for you as PNZ, with your charge, which is important and it is relevant and it is real, is to take a step back in a deep breath and say, on this lot, not anywhere else in the city, on this lot, what's the highest and best use and what, what's achieving the goals of the city of Bastrop? For us and for our future generations. To be able to allow the, the senior whose kids have, have moved on to their own families and whose spouse may have gone, or maybe the two of them decide they want to downsize. For the young family or the young professionals or the digital nomads who can move into something like this, not because it's necessarily affordable. I mean, good Lord, you know, when I bought my first place and a long time ago, I mean, I would have fallen over dead to see the prices that there are now. But it is what it is. Certainly more obtainable than the rest of the single family homes in downtown, certainly more obtainable than those for the populations that we're talking about. And certainly something that would be an addition to, not a subtraction from, that neighborhood into the city of Bastrop. In order to be able to do that, you will need to, and I'm not sure how your motions go or anything like that, I, I don't understand, and candidly, you guys know your, your business, but what you'll need to do is somehow move to recommend to the city council that you create a variance or whatever to the flum, whatever you want to call it, on that one little piece of yellow on Pecan Street, nothing else, that you recommend to the city council the change from P three to P four zoning to allow for that development. And that you allow for the warrant to take a, the parking spaces from nine by eighteen to, or excuse me, ten by twenty to nine by eighteen, which would only affect those of us who drive duly pickups. Everybody else would be just fine in a parking space like that. And we've got that size parking space all over the city. So as I said, the, the third of those three is really sort of minor. But the other two are there for you to be able to do for the city, what needs to happen to create an archetype of a fantastic mixed use, reasonable, understandable development in downtown, being brought to you not by D.R. Horton or Hunt Homes or anything like that that does things like the Colony, but brought to you by a couple of individuals who already love this city and want to contribute to it. And we have to create a space for the independent developer to come in and put a lot of their money into this, up to this point, and to try their best to be able to add to a city like Bastrop. And if, if we can get behind that, what we can see is people are committed to the city to come in and create these kinds of, of additive developments. So anyway, I appreciate you all giving me the time, I'm more than happy to answer any of your questions. And Sean and Robbie are here as well, and so is the project manager, if there are ones that are out of my swim lane. But any questions you may have?
Public comments and then questions for Mr. Kirby.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, it's okay. No, thank you, the presentation explained a lot of things clearly.
Do you have any evidence on the, to show what the duplexes, the three are going to look like?
Like this?
Yeah.
I don't, no, I'm sorry.
I think we should let the public speak and then...
I have a question.
We'll let the, we're going to let the public go first. Yeah, we're going to let the public, I'm going to open up a public comment and then we're going to let you guys in the audience ask questions. Go ahead and open that up right now. Okay? So I'm going to go through, we had a few submissions on people that aren't going to be speaking, but they wanted to voice their opinion. So first we have Michael and Linda Morcock, they wanted to record their objection to the changes for items F, G, and H. Next we have Larry Albers, who does not wish to speak, and they wanted to record their opposition of items three F, three G, three H. Caddy Albers does not wish to speak, opposition to the items three F, three, three G, three H. Jim Coon does not wish to speak, wanted to record opposition to the agenda items F, G, and H. Vanessa Knoblock does not wish to speech, also wants to accord their opposition. William Holfer does not wish to speak, recording opposition to three G. Twice. And then we have a couple of replies from the property owners around. Sam and Marilyn Callahan, they wish to record their opposition to their request for a rezone. Let's see. Who is this? Main Street Dental Services is, wants to record their opposition to the request. John Caffel wants to record his opposition to the request. And then Lisa Dot, Dot Doherty wants to, wants to record their opposition to the request. So those are all our submissions. Next, we're going to get to people that have signed up to speak, just really quick, has everyone, everyone that wishes to speak, they've had a chance to sign up to speak already? Okay? Cool. To start off, we have Sean and Thina. Would you like to come up to the podium? You've got three minutes.
I'm Sean Anthea and I live at 1507 Pecan and I own the property at 1010 Pecan, right across the street from the subject property. And the first thing I noticed was that the renditions are gorgeous. I've forgotten where the one is, that I guess it's your logo that says Pecan Place and the problem with that is that that tree is gone. They mowed that tree down with all of the rest of the stuff on that lot. So there is no Pecan in Pecan Place. I just thought that was interesting. I do want to say that I strongly, strongly disagree with the fact that the highest and best use is these duplexes. This is the gateway to the most historical small town in Texas. Our tourism economics is built on that, that's why people come here. We've got some folks that have moved here with their families and they're not coming for duplexes, they're coming for these magnificent old homes. Got a lot more money coming into town and we got a lot more kids and it's wonderful. So I, I really have a problem with that. I do want to speak very briefly, but I don't want to run out of time, about how this was all handled. I specifically want to point to these pictures. If you go on Old House Dreams, www.oldhousedreams.com, you will see the pictures that were taken in '24 when the house was put up for sale briefly. And it doesn't look anything like these. I mean, it looks like a very nice gorgeous old house that can easily be restored. Some, some of this stuff, like the foundation is totally rotted, it's just false. The front of this house is on a slab, you know, that, just briefly, if I have time, I'll tell you about Mr. Cox's house on Wilson. When I first went in there and I was looking around, it had goats. Anyway, I believe this guy wanted to tear this down so fast because he, because with it just an empty lot, he would need to recoup his investment and therefore he would have to, you know, put up something. For the $500 he got for it by lying to the heirs about his plans, he could have easily moved it. Even Sam Callahan offered to do it, but the fact is it's gone. Two things important, the transportation, absolutely a problem. He wanted it this way because he didn't want traffic ingress and egress on Chestnut, because they wouldn't let him, Techstock wouldn't let him. The other thing is probably no street parking. And where are those people going to park if they're coming to visit somebody? They're going to park in those little bitty 16 spaces over there? No, they're going to park in front of my place. Last thing is, there are 50-year-old, possibly 80, Sylvia would know this better than me, gasoline tanks on this property from the original gas station that was there. We have always in the neighborhood been concerned about the leakage from those gasoline tanks. There's been no EPA study done and I absolutely disagree that any other use other than residential, it, it would have to be done. I mean, you could, you can talk about all the water going, but you need to talk about what's under there.
Thank you for that.
And how dangerous that is. So, thanks.
Absolutely, we appreciate you coming to talk. Next we have Sam Callahan. Would you come up please, sir? You have three minutes.
Thanks for the opportunity to address the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Sam Callahan and for 28 years, Marilyn and I have resided at 1009 Pecan. We enjoy our neighborhood, our neighbors and our old 1905 vintage three-story home, which borders the subject property on both the north and east side. While remaining timely opposed to the proposed zoning, firmly opposed to the, to the proposed zoning change and development of, of two fourplex residential units, we do understand the need for a transition between Chestnut and the historic residential neighborhoods bordering Pecan, Spring, and Jefferson. We were most saddened when the applicant chose to demolish the vintage LeBlanc home, most of it mature trees and shrubs. Upon learning of the applicant's purchase, we contacted the applicant and offered to purchase and move the LeBlanc home next door. We also contacted and met on site with the owner of Brown Housewives, who confirmed that the LeBlanc home could be moved and located on a new engineered foundation. Unfortunately, the applicant had no intention to preserve the LeBlanc home and within several weeks, it was demolished. We have no interest in living next to an eight-unit condo project under P four zoning or next to a nine-unit duplex and tiny home development, which we understand is possible under the current P three zoning. While we have reviewed and find the applicant's development plans to contain thoughtfulness and merit, the fact that each residential unit is less than 1,200 square feet confirms the project's future occupancy to be transitory. The applicant's plans indicate that dumpsters are to be located just over the fence line from our home. Cramming an eightplex and a surface parking space onto such a small tract of land results in, in minimum landscaping, a lower quality of life and sends the project's impervious cover through the roof. Since learning the proposed projects, Marilyn and I have explored and discussed how high should our fence, our privacy fence be? Do we enclose or wrap around our, do we enclose our wraparound porch? Should we plant multiple live oaks and edges? Or do we pick up and move? In closing, we prefer a project that, of similar design, but with a maximum of four to six living units. Therefore, each living unit would have a larger floor plan promoting longevity. Fourteen of the site parking spaces should be sufficient and, which in turn would allow for more landscape area. Finally, as a licensed commercial real estate broker for over 45 years, I assure the applicant that he can sell four to six condo units in a desirable project for as much money as he would get for eight condo units in a project with minimum quality and density. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Seth Jones. You have three minutes.
Well, I came into this not really knowing what was going on. As far, all I knew is it was either three duplexes or two fourplexes. And your presentation softened me to the idea of P four, two fourplexes. But I live 200 feet from this place, I don't, I don't even think that three twoplexes is best use for this property. I feel like there's some type of mix, something like Mr. Callahan said. But like the... I feel like there's some type of mix, something like Mr. Callahan said, uh, but like the parking as well, um, I think people are going to, I mean, you're, you're going to have issues with having too many people there. My, uh, my family, we run and own the Hill RV Park and we have some RV sites where there's two people living in an RV, they have three cars and a golf cart. And I could see very easily people being, uh, the parking lot being over capacity and then where are those people going to park? They're probably going to park in front of my house or near my house, uh, which is fine, but it's just, it'd just be unfortunate. Um, and the duplexes in its current state, although like I said, not, I don't consider best use, would probably be better because it would block the light from the, uh, gas station into my bedroom. But, uh, if, if anything, if anything is developed, I, I'd hope that the parking can be best, you know, sorted out for whatever living units are approved. And, uh, the lighting is also, uh, under the best use for night sky, whatever the recommendation is for, uh, the least amount of light pollution. But other than that, those are all my concerns.
What, what was your address?
904 Spring Street.
Thank you, sir. I know, I should be asking for your address this year. Alrighty, next up, we have Jimmy Crouch. Three minutes, sir.
Um, Jimmy Crouch, I live at 605 Buttonwood Street, so I live right in the neighborhood as well. And the reason I wanted to come up and speak is, um, partially because of the future land use map that, uh, Mr. Kirby went through and showed, uh, I don't know if you can click back there, but we don't really have time, but the, where you show the, uh, residential part on this one lot, he's, he's exactly right, it doesn't really, uh, show any of the transitional housing. It goes straight from commercial to residential on this one property. All the rest of the properties in the area have transitioned. And I, I did a quick takeoff from Water Street to Hazel Street, which is at the, um, Art Center, and from Chestnut to Spring. And, and that four-block, uh, area, there's, um, 16 businesses, 15 houses, and there are six townhouses. Just the very next street over, there are six townhouses there. So you've already got a similar, uh, project to this and I have never heard anybody complain about the townhouses. Uh, I've heard a lot of complaints about this, but nobody complains about the townhouses. So the reason I bring that up is just to show that there's, you're, you're zoning this for residential when there's obviously a lot of businesses right there and there's already multifamily right there within a four-block span. And if you take the other side of Chestnut and do Pine Street in the same four-block area, uh, you just duplicate that. Uh, you still have a lot of businesses, you have, uh, it's about 50/50 as far as businesses to homes. So I'm not sure why you don't want to, uh, uh, or why the staff didn't want to recommend, uh, to have P4 transitional. Um, I think that, um, I think that's a better use for it and if you have a choice of, uh, it's never going to be a historic home again, unfortunately. That, that would have been the best use for it, have a 150-year-old home there, but that's not going to happen. So if you can't have that, I think the P4 transitional is a lot better option than three duplexes. So that's, and I just wanted to point out that, you know, the different makeup of the, uh, four-block area that you have there. And that's, that's all I really had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Scott, I apologize, I was trying, I clicked the clicker and I messed up your timer.
I have the timer, it's okay. I stayed prepared. All right, um, finally, we have Deborah Jones. Make sure they sign up first to speak, okay?
I'm Deborah Jones, I live at 1606 Pecan Street and I'm very bothered by the fact that the developer ran out and got that lot divided into three spots when clearly that was going to be changed because people didn't want that there. They didn't want smaller lot sizes and they didn't want duplexes. But the developer ran out and got those lots divided. There's another developer in town who's done a very similar thing and I don't think that that's, I don't think it's right for somebody who's coming in and claiming to love this city and do the best for the city, to do something to me looks like he's kind of holding us hostage. It's like, hey, I got three lots now and I can put three duplexes in three tiny homes or you can give me what I want. And I just feel like that that doesn't, that doesn't feel like to me somebody who cares about this community. And I think that what's important in a small town like this is that you really genuinely do what's best for that property and sometimes the most you can do isn't what you should do. And the fact of the matter is that Sam and Marilyn have lived there a long time and they're getting pushed out. I hate to see that. I used to live right next door to them. We own the house next door to where we used to live. That's going to impact the value of our property. And to Jimmy's point, yes, there is a six-plex down the street, but when I moved here 40 years ago, that was there. Nobody's complaining about that. That was there. What was here was a single-family home. And I would urge the developer to consider possibly doing something not as intensive as what he's trying to do, maybe not as many units, maybe talking to the property owners there and doing something that's better for the neighborhood, not better for themselves. You cannot approve this and then they say, hey, I'm building this house here. You can't make them build that. You can change the zoning on this and he can change that lot. Uh, he can sell it, excuse me. He doesn't have to build that. It doesn't have to look like that. He doesn't have to have owners in there. You cannot enforce that at all. You cannot enforce that. And my last, sorry, I forgot my last point because I ran out of time, but I do also want to say that it's very annoying that we are a dark-skies city and that nobody is enforcing those blaring lights at the gas station on the corner, you know? And for us as a neighborhood to think that any of this is going to get enforced is, I think, just a, a fallacy, uh, to think that that's going to happen. But it, to me, this feels like we're being blackmailed by the developer. That's, that's what it feels like. And I would ask them to go back to the drawing board and propose something better for the neighborhood. And I would start by talking to, uh, Sam and Marilyn.
Do we have anyone that wishes to speak?
I would like to add a couple of remarks.
Is that, does she need to sign up or is that okay?
Go forward.
Okay. Yeah, just make sure you sign up afterwards and fill out the form.
I want to talk specifically to highest and best use. As you know, we own the, uh, bed of records.
Can you speak and, can you say your name and address?
Oh yeah, Sean Anthia, 1507 and 1010 Pecan.
Okay.
Uh, I am locked in an eternal battle with the Bastrop County Appraisal District because they continue to tell me that the property where the B&amp;B is, which was always commercial, always CBD, that's why its use was allowed, they are taxing me at the residential rate because they absolutely have had lawyers tell me why that's the highest and best use. I understand this one little yellow thing, but if you look up and down Chestnut Street, all of those homes are historic. They're all businesses, but for the most part, they're all historic. So are the properties on Pine Street. I have to agree with everybody else that this is not the highest and best use for that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan, I'm sure you remember why I forgot.
All right. Make it quick, please.
I just, I think that, back to my holding us hostage comment, I really think that if you try to put three duplexes and parking and three tiny homes behind there, that you really cannot meet the coverage requirements or the drainage requirements. And so I almost believe this is a moot issue, so if you don't change the zoning, I don't think you can build three duplexes and put three tiny homes and parking on those lots without creating a lot of problems. So I like, again, I just feel like this is, feels like we're being held hostage to force a change to get them to build what they want, not what's best for the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the community that would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Chairman Scott, I was, I didn't want to stand up while, pardon me, while other citizens were, might want to speak, but may I?
Yeah, I can close the public hearing and you can make.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure.
Is that okay, Long?
Mr. Chair, I, I would really appreciate if we had some time to ask this gentleman questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's made his presentation and I think now it's time for him to answer questions. Respectfully, that's what I, I do.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and if you have something to say, can you please keep it brief so we could ask questions?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, to speak to a couple of things there. Uh, Mr. Callahan mentioned something about dumpsters. There won't be any dumpsters, it's going to be garbage cans handled by the, by the association, the concierge service that the condo association will do. He also mentioned about a privacy fence. I, I neglected to put a slide in showing the existing plan for a privacy fence between Mr. Callahan's property and the other and then wrought iron fence across the front. So the architectural features deal with the, the concern that he might have had. Um, I think it's rich that, that, um, Ms. Jones is talking about highest and best use when she's stuck in RV Park right in the middle of town.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we're going to ask some questions, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'll say again, I think it's inappropriate for Mr. Kirby to be insulting people.
Yeah.
That came up to give their opinion.
Thank you.
Sir, you are out of line.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate that and I apologize.
Yeah, but can we, can we ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate it. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. Kirby, just a few questions. First of all, clarification. Under the plan that you would execute under the P3 code, you would build nine units, which would require 18 parking spaces. So it would be three duplexes and three additional dwelling units.
Let me, can we?
Sir, sir, is, is that correct?
Well, I just want to show you the, the, the existing, um, let me see if I can get to, to that, to that slide. Did I, I'm technologically challenged, I apologize. Uh, why do I keep coming back to that?
Are you trying to pull up the photos of the duplexes?
Just the, it's going, I, I think we're going the right direction. I, I just want to get to the, the, that. So there, actually, there are three duplexes, not any, uh, other tiny homes or anything like that.
So it's a total of six units.
Yes, sir.
Which would require 12 parking spaces.
That's correct.
All right. If this zoning change is, is, um, approved, you will build eight units.
Correct.
That will require 16 parking spaces.
Correct.
So there actually would be more units if you approve this.
That's correct.
All right. Additionally, you're promising that if you build this, they will be owner occupied. That's a promise.
Yes.
And second.
I'm sorry, I'm, let me clarify just to make sure that I'm, I'm speaking, that I'm answering truthfully.
Yeah.
Under state law, you cannot prevent an owner of a single-family home or a condo or anything else from renting that home out. The difference would be that duplexes by nature would be rented units from day one and so I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm.
I understand.
Okay.
But you're promising that they will be owner occupied.
In as much as you can promise that. You, you can't promise that somebody won't buy it and then rent it out for six months at a time.
You're also representing that the final product will match the character of the neighborhood.
Yes.
That's another promise. Okay. Thank you for that. Now, you made the comment, it will never be a single-family home again on that property. Why is that?
Well, because just as a business matter, if you're going to buy a piece of property, you don't buy it to lose money on it. And although, I remember when talking to Bastrop City Attorney, he said, well, there's, there's a, a single-family home that just got built behind a gas station in my neighborhood in Rollingwood, that's Austin, it's not Bastrop. And in Bastrop, it, the, these, there would, nobody's going to build a single-family home on that lot. It doesn't make economic sense.
But, but, but you're just saying it doesn't make economic sense. Why?
Because it doesn't. You, and this would be more economically viable for, for Ruby Crown than building a single-family home.
Okay.
And as a homeowner, as, as a property owner, you have a right in Texas to build what you want on the property. Now, whether or not you and I agree with that is not the issue. The issue is what can they build on this property? And what can be built on this property that makes the most economic sense is to build duplexes or to build the fourplexes. I, I think as a business owner, if you're a business owner, you certainly understand that.
Well, I will tell you, I think that there have been a number of properties in Bastrop where homes have actually been moved on the lots from out of the area or homes have been restored and it made perfect economic sense for the individuals that produce those properties.
Good for them.
Um, why are the parking places out front in the duplexes? Why can't those be put in the back?
It's just the way that the, the thing was laid out.
So you could lay it out another way if you chose to.
Yeah, so on the, the duplexes because of the lot width, you don't, oh, I'm Sean Kirkpatrick, uh, I'm the managing member, principal of Ruby Crown Development. So when you go from P3 and the duplexes and, uh, the lot width, you're, you can't access the rear because there's no alley. Uh, I can do that with the quads because I can put the driveway down the middle between the two of them. Uh, and so we'd have to take access off Pecan and with the recent change to the parking ordinance, parking in the first layer is now allowed. So, and for the most economical way to develop duplexes and the, the use of these, you, you would put them in the, in the front. These are max footprint, uh, is a max footprint rendering, uh, for the duplexes, uh, meeting the 50% impervious cover of P3. Ultimately, would we go that large with them? Probably not because of the economics of a 1,500-square-foot unit and the rental rate doesn't probably make sense, uh, but, uh, we, we need to park it in the front because we don't have access to the rear.
So my next question is, you're not looking to put a business on this property, correct?
No, that's correct.
Why do you need this zoning change?
Because you can't do the fourplex project under P3.
Why?
Because P3 doesn't allow it.
It, it, it allows for three duplexes? Is that your testimony?
No.
But it doesn't allow, but it doesn't allow for two quadplexes?
So, no, that, let me take one step back and then I can answer that. And the duplex project is a, is a subordinate plat that was submitted prior to the change to, that, that, uh, created the minimum lot size coverage. So that was submitted prior to the change in the B3 code. And then they tabled that, that plat, that application because they would rather do a much nicer development than the, than the duplexes. But because it was submitted prior to the change in the B3, then if this is turned down, then their grandfathered plat application under the prior code allows for the duplexes.
How much of this is about the impervious cover limitations that the city put into effect?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Well, if you have the zone P4, more of it can be impervious cover than it can be under P3. How much of this is about the impervious cover limitations you're facing under P3?
Feel free to answer.
Yeah, it's, the impervious cover calculations, it's more driven by the Gills Branch watershed than it is the impervious cover. The, the ability to comply with the Gills Branch watershed and be able to use the true grid to detain water on-site and then have the overflow into the storm sewer is, in the P4 case, is, is more the driving factor of how that all works out, uh, more so than, than the impervious cover. Uh, with the P3 project, and I want to make sure, we've not done any, any test fitting or any engineering related to the P3 project related to the Gills Branch watershed. Uh, I've done some rough back-of-the-mapkin nap, ma, ma, back-of-the-napkin, back-of-the-napkin math. And with the 50% impervious cover and knowing what we did, what we were, were able to do under P4 to meet the Gills Branch watershed. under P4 to meet the Gills Branch watershed, we'll be able to meet it under the P3 as well.
And, and just one last question, and then I'd like to have Mr. Cowie just to verify something. You have made it sound as if it's mandatory that you build three duplexes. That either you build this or you're gonna have to build three duplexes. As if that, there is some requirement that, that forces you to build three duplexes. Couldn't you build some type of alternative units that don't put six units on that property? Why isn't mandatory you build three duplexes, which is what you are making it sound like? When you, when there are plenty of alternatives that you could choose to build something that would match a character of the neighborhood and that would be better for all the neighbors who are here today?
Well, I guess I'd answer that this way, and as, and, and not speaking for, she's Sean, and Robbie, Sean might, might have something else to say, but, you know, as a business person, when you take on a project, you try to figure out how to do what's best for the community and, and you make those decisions. You could do anything within the confines of the code and, and however much money you want to drop into it, or however much money you want to make, or whether you want to make anything or not. We were, before we came here, I was talking about, you know, the, I mean, a charity project that the builder decided that they were gonna lose an immense amount of money on building it. That's their prerogative. But the reality is that it is the prerogative of the landowner to do what the landowner chooses to do with their property. And yes, they could, they could build a, you know, whatever they, you know, whatever they are allowed within the code, and sure, there are all sorts of alternatives that could be explored. But the two that have been explored are to put the duplexes out or to put the fourplexes on it. Yes, absolutely. In, in the ethereal, you could, you could dream up all sorts of great ideas and, and I suspect if you had lots of time to think about it, some of them you might sit down and say, gee, this is one I haven't thought of. This is what's been put before us today. And, and the idea of, I don't think it's really, with all due respect, the, the planning commission, excuse me, planning and zoning, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, because honestly, this is my first rodeo of coming before you guys to talk to you about a project like this. But I, I didn't really understand planning and zoning's role to be, to decide what a builder builds on their property. My understanding was it's your role to step back and say, is this the highest and best use based upon the zoning request if it is not already permitted under, under the zoning, under the code? Not, we're in the business of deciding what the front of the building's gonna be, how many buildings will be there, whether or not it's, it's got, you know, four parking spaces per bedroom because we think they'll have a lot of visitors. I didn't understand that to be your role. I understood your role to be to look at the alternatives and say, what is the highest and best use based upon what this landowner, in the great state of Texas, we have that right to do what we want to do with our project, what this landowner has decided that they want to do on that land. And, and at the same time, understanding, as I said, looking at it through the prism of, as somebody who loves Bastrop just like I do, what's the best thing for the city?
Mr. Kirkpatrick, where do you live? What city?
We currently reside in Lakeway, Texas.
Thank you.
Sylvia?
I might, I might point out, how long did you live in Bastrop? He was here for three years.
Sylvia, would you like to say something?
I sure would.
Cool.
First of all, I appreciate Chris, I appreciate Sean, everybody, the neighbors who are here, but let's first start off what your role is. It is exactly what you're doing tonight. It is the best interest of the city and it is the best interest of the residents. You are entitled to recommend whatever it is you would like to recommend. There are functions of how we get there, whether that's a special permit, that's a special zoning, that's a variance, a warrant, whatever you want to call it. But yes, you are within your roles and your rights to do that. Number two, I, I need to for sure say that this project does not have a final drainage plan. We're not so for sure that the infrastructure can be met yet, and so we're not sure if we're gonna require a public improvement plan, a PIPA. We don't know any of those things because we're in the very preliminary stages. So to say that these things will work, won't work, et cetera, that is untrue. Second is, the council did look at pervious pavers who can assist with drainage, because we do have issues with construction along Gills Branch. We do live in a very flood-prone area, although I'm hopeful that maintenance and other things that we're doing won't make us so flood-prone. But there's an assumption that perhaps the full credit will be given for pervious pavers here, and that's just not true, because there's some geological information that we need that we just do not have at this point. Secondly, this configuration, I don't want to say is a scare tactic because he did get it in under the wire, he did do what he needed to do to get it subdivided, but you can request a, sorry, Colin, can you put that back up? I don't even know what I did. No, I'm, I'm a little crazy. So, you know, to perhaps meet in the middle, the request could have been to get a zero lot line between some of the buildings so that you have that access to the rear, so you can move some of that parking to the rear. That's, and we haven't even discussed that because quite frankly, this isn't really what they want to do. And lastly, you can prevent Airbnbs, you can prevent them if you write it into the HOA requirement, so long as the owner knows what they're getting into. What you can't allow is later on change the rule and say, now you can't rent it. No, because we can't do that. Texas absolutely has strong property rights, but if you know what you're getting into, you know what you're getting into. And that's what makes zoning so important. That's what makes the future land use so important. That's what makes the destruction of the B3 so important, Ms. Parsons, who fought me so long on it. That's what makes the destruction of the B3 so important, because no minimum lot sizes, no parking requirements do the very opposite of protect what we were trying to protect in the beginning, and that is the historic component of Bastrop. We are frantically reworking the code so that smaller lot sizes, 2,500 lot sizes, 3,500 lot sizes will be allowed, but they'll be allowed in the periphery where it makes sense and you have to put in all of the infrastructure to make that work. The reality of it is, he does have three parcels, and, and to your comment, Commissioner Toth, it doesn't make sense that you can't put a fourplex. I get it. But we didn't have minimum lot sizes at the time, he's able to put duplexes on a per-lot basis, which is how he gets to three. So we get six here and we get eight on the other side. And I understand the difference is traffic and configuration. I firmly believe there's a possibility to work something out in the middle of all of this because I think, no matter what, and I can't help it and neither can any of you because this is what we inherited, right? It is a very ugly baby that we've been trying to make pretty, and no matter how many nose jobs and eyelid lifts and everything that we give it, it's still an ugly baby. But unfortunately, at its best, you're gonna end up with three duplexes there. And how we can figure that and how we can work through that, that is, it is what it is. But some of the other stuff I needed to address to get clear.
I have a question.
Analysis of the P3 code, it says no duplexes.
I'm sorry?
If you read the B3 code and analysis and you have duplexes, it says not.
In the P3?
Yeah.
He's grandfathered.
Yes.
He grandfathered.
Yes, so-
It's a whole thing, it's the fact that-
Exactly.
It goes-
Exactly, we, we were in the process of making-
Okay, so we allowed duplexes in, in P3 prior?
Before.
Got it, okay, that's all it's-
And that's my point, is he did get in prior, I, I think actually he got in the week before we took it, we took it to council. We've been talking about this coming, we had workshop after workshop. We could have brought it much sooner, but, you know, I'm gonna let the delays speak for themselves. And I want you guys up here who helped with those delays to take ownership of that. I've been crucified about the changes to the B3 code, and this is the result.
Thank you.
We'll get some, some from this side?
Yeah. I just, I don't know that I have any question. I do have one question. If you go with this plan here, do you have a, have you even considered a landscaping plan? Have you considered, well, what does that mean to you?
I wish your mic's off. Is the microphone on? No. Switch is on top.
There we go.
As I said before, I'm technologically challenged, my apologies.
It's okay, thank you.
Yes, there is, there is a landscaping plan, obviously, well, not obviously, but if you're gonna call it luxury of affordable living, it, it can't have a dirt yard. The idea would be privacy between Mr. Callahan's place and along the, well, Mr. Callahan's property is the house and then it wraps the, the east side. Privacy fencing on those sides, and then wrought iron fence across the front to allow visibility through the yard onto the street. And then the existing trees plus other landscaping embedded, so yeah, it's, it actually has a very nice landscaping plan.
Okay. I don't necessarily have any more questions, but I do have some things I want to say.
Okay.
We came back and changed parking. And I live in a neighborhood that's very crowded. I live in Pecan Park. I live in, I live in a neighborhood that I call a monopoly house neighborhood, where all the houses look the same. We came, we allow people to park, you know, we, we, we now have this rule where you can have one car per, per bedroom, and you have people who live in homes that have a lot more cars than that. They end up on the street. And it drives me absolutely bonkers. I call Doc probably every other week to try to help me get, take care of some of that. I don't think that there's any way around it. I think that you will end up with houses, or, excuse me, with cars on the street. But this city, unfortunately, is going to change. And it's going to get more crowded. It will, it's, there's just no way around it. And when you start talking about infill in downtown, we have people that will be buying that property or those properties with the intention to make money. That's, or either that or build, they might buy, buy a piece of property to build their own home, I mean, there will be some of that going on as well. But I don't think that there's any way around it. We're trying to come up with rules and changes that make sense. We're trying to protect the integrity of downtown Bastrop so that it doesn't feel like a monopoly neighborhood. But there still will be changes. And, let me, I do have one question. When you say affordable, you know, what is the, what is the idea or what is the thought that these particular condos, I'm gonna call them that, what, what would they cost?
So, as, as you recall, I veer away from affordable because it sounds too, it sounds sort of like, you know, government assisted. I, I think the reality is we're talking about obtainable housing. And I think the price points in the low threes or something like that, 250 to 3, something like that, which is half the price of a house anywhere else in downtown.
Right. And that's one thing I want to address. We have to provide opportunities for the families that help make Bastrop tick. The, you know, the policemen, the nurses, the, you know, we, we have to provide housing that people can afford. And I live in a neighborhood where I bought the home very early. My home has almost doubled in price. I wouldn't be able to afford my monopoly home today if I were to try to buy it today. We have to be able to provide some affordable housing, and I'm gonna use the word affordable because it means affordable. You can afford it. We have to be able to provide some of those opportunities for people or we're gonna be in trouble. So, you know, it's hard for those of us that sit up here to hear everybody in the neighborhood unhappy about what's getting, you know, ready to happen to that lot, and yet, follow the rules that we have to follow to make everybody happy. I do think, or what I hear, and I could be wrong, and, and let me ask one more question. Sylvia, will they be coming back to us with the final plan that we approve? No. All right, so they can decide to build the duplexes or they can decide to build this, it's up to them at this point, they, they can make this, that decision, correct?
I think if I-
No, if you deny the zoning change-
Uh huh.
Then they're, they'll go back to their original minor plats. That will probably be administratively handled because it's less than four.
Yeah.
You'll see it back if there's some major infrastructure required because you'll need to recommend approval.
I'm gonna be asked the question another way. If we approve the zoning change, and do, will they come back to us with a final design? No.
No, ma'am.
All right, they can build whatever they want to. So this is just a promise.
Yep.
This is just a promise that they're gonna build something that fits within the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up. This is Robbie Kirkpatrick, Sean's wife. Let me say, with the amount of money they've spent already to deal, to build a drainage plan, to work through the whole itch situation with pervious cover, to have architects, spend a ton of money on architects to be able, to put these things together, it may be a promise, but last time I checked, when I've dropped a whole bunch of money on a promise, I'm much more likely to follow through on it than to go, oh, now I'm gonna change everything. And I don't know if Robbie, you might have something else to say about-
Hi, I'm Robbie Kirkpatrick, I'm the founder of Ruby Crown, and I'd just like to add that I've lived in historic homes, I've lived in two different ones that were 110 years old, and I care about aesthetics. I come from a design background, and I'm the one who physically drove around Bastrop after living here for three years, Sean was here for three years, and taking photos of the houses that I thought were the most beautiful. Those were my photos that are from my phone. The architect was hired by me, the architect's name is Sixth River, and so I'm telling you that I have zero intention of like giving you this picture and then switching the design if you give me the P4. I'm about beauty and I'm about integrity, and if, if you give me this design, this is what we're building. Now, the, the wrought iron may look a slightly tiny bit different, but we're sticking with Sixth River Architects, that's who we've hired. We've spent a significant amount of money to bring these pictures to you from our design team. So I have, I have zero intention, I know you don't know me from Adam's Housecut, but I can tell you, I'm not going to show you this picture and then build some POS that doesn't look like this picture. So this is my word to you. If we get P4, I'm about design integrity and I'm about maintaining a historic aesthetic to my project.
Got it. I, I just want to say one more thing. And that is, they currently have the right to build the duplexes. I'm of the opinion that there're gonna be cars on the street if they're duplexes. I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at, we're going to be looking at cars on the street. There's no way around it, I know everybody's unhappy about that, but there's, I just don't believe there's gonna be any way around it. So, that's kind of spilt milk at this point. At this point, it is, how do we come up with something that's going to look like downtown historic Bastrop and do the best job we can with what we have to work with at this point? And I think I'm gonna shut up at this point.
That'd be good. All right, thank you, Jeffrey.
Since we don't, since, as a planning and zoning committee, we don't get a choice of what's being built on there because it's not our job to make suggestions of what we think should be built. We're gonna stick to what we're here to do tonight, and that's to decide if we want to go P4 on that. When you decide to go with the two homes side by side, which are considered to me four-family homes, four-family homes. In real estate, when we write a contract for a house, that contract says one to four-family residential contract, one to four-family. Well, what you want to build is a four-family home. It's not a quadplex, it's not an apartment complex. And I'm tired of everybody thinking that that is going to be ugly. We know what it looked like before, there's the picture, that's the- We know what it looked like before. There's the picture. That's the outside picture, so you can't say those are doctored. Okay? Which side is the north side? Do you know which picture's the north side? Which face is that gentleman's home?
This side.
Right. There you go. It's the middle picture. And then I think of that now facing me, I think I would be a little bit happier. That that's so much prettier. And it's, it's not in, I don't know. You know, I know the folks whose mother lived there, so the last thing I ever want to say is anything negative about that house because that house is historic. And we can't do anything about the past. What happened with the demolition, it was all within their rights to do that. We may not be happy, but there's nothing we can do. Now we're trying to decide the best use for that property, for the city and for the neighbors. Across the street is a business, a bed and breakfast. Where, when you're full, how many cars would go around your property?
I have 18 apartments. And this would impact my business so dramatically, but that's not what I'm worried about.
No, I'm just asking you one question.
There's traffic. The traffic, I can't dump traffic right there. We all come over with a car.
Yeah, sure. Hey, Jeffrey. All right. Yeah, let's just keep it on the log.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep it going. I just want to make sure about parking on that. I took notes as everybody's talking. Where did he go? Oh, there he is.
Mr. Crouch.
Is there a way to put no parking signs in the first block of Pecan between Chestnut and, and Spring?
That would be public works, and the police department identifying a traffic concern to do that.
So that would be my, to me, that's a, that's a fix. If everybody's worried about parking there. Now, why can't we keep it P3 if we subdivided it down the middle? Put the four-family house on this side and the four-family house on this side. Why do we need to change to four, P4?
Minimum lot size requirements under the current code.
But you were grandfathered in.
Well, no, you're not grandfathered for, for, it's already subdivided under the old. Now, if we came to you now that it's already been changed, we wouldn't be able to meet those lot size requirements.
And again, that's why we want to be all be so transparent on this project. It's not just a simple zoning change. It's, if you don't get the zoning, I can do this. So what happened was, again, this is like other cases. We were in the process of changing rules. Again, Sylvia touched on with the B3 code, we had no lot size. The submittal for the plat was before that due effect, 1/3 acre went to effect. The second aspect of that, the zoning classification that exists at the time of submitting is plat allowed duplexes, not three or fourplexes. So lot size.
But you can't consider this a plex. This is a house.
It's, it's, it's still, it's four units. By building codes, development codes.
It's a four-family home.
It's a four-family home, not a single-family home.
But that's a, that, according to the real estate documents that we, that are legal documents, we, we feel, I would write a document for this house.
But by building code and development code, it would be considered four units, no matter what you call them.
Okay, so that's, that's the key.
That's the key, by building code and development.
The city's rules, the city's rules.
It's four separate units, whether you call it four.
So is this in our hands? How's this in our hands then? It's a city code already says they can do what they want.
No, that's not what we're saying.
That's what we need to know.
No, sir. Let me, let me clarify, and let me be real super clear.
We do. We're not clear. That's why we're confused.
Real super clear. The fallback position for this developer is three lots that were subdivided at a time where we had no minimum lot sizes.
That's correct.
Because he can do three, the uses allowed on those lots are duplexes, again, before the changes were made. If he walks away from here with no P4 given by you guys, his next move is to finalize the plat at Development Services and submit for building permits.
That's correct. That's correct.
Period. The fourplex is, once you give the zoning, same thing. He's going to go through the building process. The only way you guys will see it again is if there's major infrastructure plans or there's warrants that are necessary for whatever else is being constructed. But after tonight, you may never see it again.
Isn't that what I just said, though? He's following the, the rules.
He's following the rules in place. His fallback position, yes, are the rules in place.
So.
So, but your position of replatted and put two fourplexes because you're going to end up there anyway, that's the very thing you're trying to decide tonight and rule on.
Okay. One more thing.
Just one?
Real quick.
Yep.
I would think then, as neighbors that are around that area, would you rather have three duplexes or two fourplexes?
So why can't you make the duplexes look historic in talking about 12 cars versus 16 cars?
Yeah, thank you for that. Can we keep the, the audience out of it for now?
My turn now?
Gary, go ahead.
Understand, people, we created this problem for these people here. When the B3 code came into existence, it was a mess. And they bought in that area. They have done nothing wrong, absolutely nothing wrong. Thank you for coming to Bastrop to help develop it. It's what we should be saying in this situation, and that we created the problem, now we can solve the problem also. Don't blame them a bit for coming back. I love this compared to three duplexes. It's as simple as it is. Is that best use? I believe it is for everybody. It's, this stuff, not in my backyard. You could solve that problem. They should, those people should get together, put a whole bunch of money together, buy them out, send them back to Austin if that's the case. It's not going to happen that way, but we created this problem and we can solve the problem. It's very simple. I propose that we give them what they need to do to, to take it to this, this area here.
Thank you. You have a question? Go ahead.
Doc, I got a question for you. This is actually concerning 3F, so hopefully this helps move this forward. I've been on the board long enough, and I know that Commissioners Parson and Moss may remember this as well, but I do remember the map having striped lines at some point in 2024. Are we correct that at some point the gas station and the property to the north of the gas station did have a mixed-use designation on the flum?
So there was transition in the map, but we have to go by what was physically finally adopted.
Did it ever?
I can't speak specifically to that because I can't.
No problem. Cool. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Barrow, I can say that we, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
In your development, is there any guarantees you're going to stay with four?
Four.
You've got, you've got variations that you've been talking about here. You know, are you just going to have one set of rules or one building that you're going to have? Or are you going to have the opportunity to maybe change at a later date?
Let me make sure I understand the question. Two four-home buildings.
Yep, yep.
Under a condo association with rules that we talked about, like, for example, limiting, making sure that, that it's not going to be an Airbnb, et cetera. Is that, is that the question?
Correct, and no other additional buildings, nothing, no.
Yeah, I mean, I will, I'll let, I'll let the, the developers say, but as I said to you before, I mean, you don't, you don't sink as much as they've seconded this project, only to turn around and say, well, I think we'll start over again, but I'll, I'll let Sean speak to that.
Yeah, the B3 code and P4 allows for triplexes and quads. But beyond that, we couldn't fit anything else on there, and we can't add additional stories to add, and we couldn't park it. So this is, this is the highest and best use, and we think it's a great transition from the gas station into the Pecan neighborhood. I hear the concerns about parking, and when we go to develop the condo association docs, six, nine months from now, that's where you'll see, or will be recorded at the courthouse, the, the, the six-month rental minimum, so we avoid Airbnbs. I'm not an Airbnb fan. You, you couldn't give me one to own. And, and the reason we, one of the big reasons we want to do condos versus the duplexes is I don't want to own them. With the duplexes, I would end up having to own them and rent them and manage them and all of that. And I, I like for-sell product better. And it's really a math problem at the end of the day. And when we started this process nearly a year ago, and we met with the city in December of last year at a pre-application meeting that started all this off, everything we've done was allowed under code. Our intention has never been to come and ask for a warrant or a variance from P3 or P4. Now, we need one for P4 for the parking spaces, and I can make the argument of why we should get it. It, it reduces the impervious cover, and that's a standard-sized parking space for the type of parking lot we're putting in. The 10 by 20 spaces are really a pad outside of a single-family home garage because your garage is either 20 by 20 or 20 by 24, and you're able to park a 10 by 20. But when you walk out into the city hall parking lot, and I haven't measured them, but if we measured them off, I bet they're 9 by 18ths. And so when you're in a traditional parking lot style, and that, that improves the impervious cover, I think it's 37 feet of space times 16 spaces. And so the math works better for us and it's better for the community on that. But it's a math problem, and we're, what we're committed to building is what you see right there, which is four units in a house form that fits into the neighborhood. And when my wife says that she is, the aesthetics of it are going to be great, they're going to be great, and the interiors are going to be great. This is not going to be first-time buyer materials inside. We're going, because of our buyer profiles, if you saw the buyer profiles, our buyers are looking for an upgraded experience. That's why it's called accessible luxury, is what we refer to it as.
Do you have any way of accommodating for guest parking without pushing vehicles onto the street?
So what we have to believe that is if, as Chris alluded to, he had two widows approach him about the lock-and-leave active-adult-first floor. Are they going to have two cars if it's a single person living in there? They might, but we can also, through the condo docs, limit the number of cars that somebody can park on, can park there. But at 16 spaces, if you've got young families, singles, digital nomads that are not married, widowers or empty nesters, I mean, there, we may not have 16 cars among the eight units. It may be 14 cars, and so there may be other spaces available. And so we originally, when we came to the pre-app meeting last December, it was always rear parked and it always had 16 spaces. The change in the parking ordinance, the only thing that changed for us was the, not the 10 by 20 versus the 9 by 18. So we've always tried to be good stewards with this project and go above and beyond the code that was in effect last year when we started this project. And so I can't guarantee it, but I would, I would believe out of, out of eight units and 16 potential cars that with our buyer profile and mix, that there will be open spaces for, for guests to come and visit. Can I say that there's not going to be street parking? I, I can't say that because that happens in single-family homes that have four parking spaces, two-car garage, two parking spaces in front of it, and they have people come visit and they're parking in the street. That's, that's our problem. We have four kids, three at home, three of them, two of them over the age of 16, and it's the exact problem.
May I ask one final question about why I have to come out?
No, we have to keep it with the, the citizen's comment is over, but we have other items you could speak on later. Yeah, we have a couple other public hearings. If you guys have any other questions or concerns, we'll make sure that we address those later on. Does, do we have, okay.
Is it possible that before we vote, that we all can just meet in private to talk?
I don't think we're allowed to have a private session. No.
No, I just.
You are allowed to break into executive session?
Really?
Yeah. I just think it would be good to do that because the last thing I want is, we all need to be able to speak freely. And I, you know, I just want to speak freely and I don't want to make anybody feel bad.
So you can break into executive session? Well, Commissioner asked us, if that was the goal, you should not be a commissioner. We are not, that, that's not our role. But you can break into executive session if you have discussions of a legal nature. If you want to break into executive session to not hurt people's feelings, we can't do that.
Yeah.
If legal issues related to the code, yes, we can break into executive session.
Are we allowed to state those?
But I will be the first one to pull you out of executive session if you veer off.
Are we able to state the legal issue before we break in?
You need to state the legal issue.
Can you put it in the, in the mic for, for me? Thank you.
We could put this developer in, but our actions could put the developer into, that would bring legal action against the city because of all the crazy things that's happened with the code that, that we've done over, over the period of time.
The developer has not written a suit?
I didn't say has. I'm just saying that there's a possibility of it. Well, let's find out if there is a legal issue, is the point. That's my point. I thought that's what the executive session was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should, I don't think we should break, I don't see a legal issue.
I agree.
Executive session on legal complaints or any actions that would result in, or we've been corrected with a lawsuit or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't see any need to go into executive session. Also, too, I don't want to, it's getting kind of late. I don't want to waste a bunch of time. I think everything that we can talk about, the public can hear as well.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay. You have a question down here?
Yeah, a question from Mr. Kirkpatrick. Why not just make the duplexes owner occupied and build them so they match the character of the city? I mean, I've heard a lot about loving Bastrop and, and the like. Well, if you love Bastrop, whether it's a duplex or whether it's a quadplex or a four-family home, why not just build something that we can all be proud of? Because what I'm hearing here is basically kind of almost an implicit threat that, that you either, we either agree to change the zoning so you can approve, so you can build this, which by the way is an unenforceable promise, as is the fact that it will be owner occupied, that's unenforceable. But why not show that Bastrop pride and tell us that if you have to build the duplexes, you will make, you will build them in a way that we can all be proud of, and that you will make them owner occupied?
It goes back to a math problem. Six units versus eight, eight-for-sale units.
When you go to the six units, I need to rent them and get the premium of the rents when I go to sell them to an investor that's going to own them long-term. I'm probably going to need to own them for three to five years to make it work for me. We haven't modeled it thoroughly, but it's really a math problem that with the rents, that there's more value created selling to an investor down the road than there is selling the individual units. And it's more complicated in, in the condo sense of, of creating a condo regime and dividing those individual buildings into being able to sell them. So it, it, it creates, there's a bunch of math issues associated with it. The, the condo assessments that are due on, on those duplexes, it gets funky. And so it's, it, it just doesn't, the math doesn't work. And so our preference is for-sell product, and the way to do for-sell product is, is the eightplexes or the fourplexes and do two-four-family homes. And, and that's what we're, we're, we believe is the highest and best use. We believe, we've always believed it was the best project for that site. Transitioning from that gas station, it's going to do so many more things that we probably don't realize today just because of the height of those buildings, you know. We're going to be blocking a lot of that gas station noise and sound. We're going to be rebuilding the fence between us and the gas station and, and trying to build something that is really, really beautiful on that site, and you don't even notice it. That, that's the ultimate goal and, and why we've always rear parked it. But it really comes down to the six versus the eight in the math problem, and it's two different math problems when you're needing to rent the duplexes versus sell them because of the premium that you'd get for the rentals versus the for-sell condos in the fourplexes.
Okay, do we have any other questions currently? Well, we're on 3F. We're talking about currently, because we don't want to put the chicken before the egg, we're talking about our future land use map because our staff recognizes our, in our city, the future land use map is a very important tool that we use when we are, or when they are making recommendations for us to approve or not approve a rezoning. So I think where we should start, I know we could get lost in the weeds of the types of buildings and how they look and whatnot. The first piece of this puzzle is deciding whether or not we want to have it as a residential lot or whether we want to have it mixed-use. If we approve the zoning, regardless if they put those fourplexes or they sell the property, we're going to increase the density. Not only are we going to increase the density, now we're setting the precedent for Block 12, which is that entire block, and possibly the block to the east, which I believe is 27. twenty-seven, for all of those to be P4. I think anyone can really make the case that, hey, we should extend the line. Because you could see to the west, you have your commercial, to the east, you have some P4 kind of already bleeding in that transition that P4 is supposed to be. So, as a community, we need to decide, does this area fit a P4 zoning? Is that what we want as a community? I'm taking a look at the types of submissions I've got, from the people at it'll immediately affect, the people on the block, and it doesn't seem like they want to do so. The sentiment that I've been hearing, and just from the past few months, is the B3 code itself, and the density that the B3 code allowed, wasn't something that we really wanted in the downtown area. If you do the math, if we go to P4, we're going to increase the density of that property. The fourplexes will introduce four extra parking spaces. Let's say half of those people have an extra car, there could be parking issues, which would be reduced by reducing the number of units. So, at the end of the day, we need to decide, does P4 make sense here? And honestly, I'm going to say, does P4 make sense for that entire block? Because if we make this property P4, we're moving that line a little bit, which, that's what P4 is for. P4 is supposed to be the transition between commercial and residential. I don't think what they're asking for a rezon is unreasonable, but at the same time, we have to take in consideration what our community wants as well.
That's right. I'm still not sure what the community wants. Do they want three duplexes, or do they want two quadplexes? That's what we need to know, and that's why I wanted to meet, and just so that we could find out. I just don't feel like I still have the information. All I heard was no, no, no. No for what?
Chairman Scott.
So, I think the, so the city, city council, and the community set a precedent back in the day whenever they said no to the Farm Street plot, which was affordable housing, not in section eight definition, but affordable housing. Parking issues, drainage issues, traffic, but the people surrounding didn't want it. There has been massive amounts of opposition to this one.
Correct.
For less people, but still, the same issues, drainage, parking, et cetera. So, the decision, in my opinion, is do you go with city precedent that the code has already defined?
That's what I meant.
Or do you choose something else?
Sorry, can you say again? The city precedent?
City council did the Farm Street, they negated the Farm Street development. This is, this is a little too familiar.
Turn your mic. So, the audience, the camera can hear.
So, you got, so the city council voted against the Farm Street thing, which was forty-one units, yes, huge difference in amount of units.
Are you talking about North End?
North End, wherever it was.
Oh, you're talking about the North End Prairie?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, completely different, Commissioner Barrow, completely different.
I disagree. You're setting a precedent on what can be done on city property, what can be done in residential neighborhoods. And this is what this is. They have the same issues, parking, drainage. The neighbors have said no.
Correct.
So, do we take, do we give importance to the community opposition and keep it as is, or do we change it? In this proposal, the very first one, change the future land use so that it's?
I understand what you're saying. It's not city precedence. It's not city precedence because we took action, it's city precedence because we listened to the neighbors.
Exactly.
Got it. I'll take that precedence every day.
Sylvia, really quick, so staff recommended denial.
Correct.
Is this solely based on the future land use map?
Yes, and let me go into that, because if you recall, when we talked about the future land use map, that future land use map is more than just a concept, it's more than a what we think. It is our planning tool. It's how we plan for roads, it's how we plan for water, it's how we plan for infrastructure. And so, if we're going to keep moving the goalposts, those flumes are usually, you know, five-year at least, as fast as we're moving, three-year maybe. But if I'm trying to plan for infrastructure, and I'm trying to plan capital projects, and if you pay attention to the budget, there's a whole list of them in there. And so, if we keep moving the goalposts with the flume, then I'm having a real hard time to even get into planning, which is already hard today, trying to undo and then plan for the future. So, the flume has way more weight than we're giving it with just a quick change.
Gary, you have something?
I have a question. The question I have, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with it. The problem I have with it is that everything else around it, I mean, it's that like one spot that got left out. How did that happen?
I don't think that one spot got left out, that when the flume was being discussed, there was a tremendous amount of citizen input on what should or shouldn't happen in the historic core. The piece that got left out is a piece on 150 at Chestnut, that really is surrounded by red, and we accidentally left yellow, and that's because nobody's really, nobody's really paying attention to what's going on headed toward the state park. But this one had a significant amount of public input, as we sat at these very tables with folks whose superintention is to protect the historic core. Now, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Barrow, well, it used to be mixed-use, you know, go back to mixed-use. We used to have five-acre lots. We don't have five-acre lots anymore. I mean, things do change, and it should change at the will of the community, because they're the people who elect, the council, who makes the changes on these land uses. Not to mention, it changes based on what the city can afford. I can't tax the residents to death, or fee the residents to death, having to upgrade drainage, or street whiffs, or et cetera, et cetera, to accommodate the density. That is flies in the face of what we call affordable housing. So, you know, six one-way, half dozen the other, but we have a future land use map that had a lot of public input, that I was also super criticized for on why we didn't bring it sooner. And so, those changes were made, and they were changed very recently, they were changed in May. So, when we have a zoning case that comes before us, that's pretty much the first thing we look to.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of the city manager?
Go ahead.
Sylvia, please let me know if my understanding is correct, but under P3, the impervious cover limitations are fifty percent. Is that correct? Under P4, they are sixty percent.
Correct.
So, if this proceeds with the approval of this commission, we are creating a plot of land that's going counter to everything we've been trying to do in terms of reducing impervious cover and solving our drainage and flooding problems.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, yes, and the changes in the historic core were essential for drainage. I mean, I'm going to tell you again, the emperor's not wearing any clothes, because we adopted a B3 code on the guise of protecting for flooding, and then removed minimum lot sizes, and increased impervious cover. So, we undid that, we made larger lot sizes, and we reduced impervious cover. Now, we know impervious cover does not have a universal solution. So, we are also frantically working to bring back alternatives for that, and that means rain barrels, that means pervious pavers, that means all of those things. But every lot is individual, because everybody's geology is different. You may have more clay, you may have more sandy loam, and we have to take all of those things into consideration. This development still has to get a warrant for parking sizes, which was also a giant consideration, as Commissioner Parsons stated. She hates the parking on her property, and it sticks out over the sidewalk, and it does X, Y, Z. So, we had significant conversations about parking as well. So, there's no final drainage plan to this development yet. You don't have a warrant for parking, and you still need a zoning. Those are the three things before you today. And the first thing before you is, do you make an amendment to the future land use map?
May I say something really quick?
Sure.
Yeah.
Why not? I'll just sit over here.
Well, I was just going to say, just keep in mind, I just want all of us to right now just focus on the zoning. That's it. Not the building, not the structure, anything else, just the zoning, the density, and how it affects the other properties around it with the rezon. Yes, sir.
Which is what I was going to say, is Jimmy is exactly right when it comes to this piece of property. We did P4 for a particular reason. This whole B3 code screwed this city up so bad, it will never be unwound. It's like going to a golf ball, and just, everything affects everything. If you look at the use that they have now with the P4 here, P3 there, P5 surrounding this thing, and Pine Street, and the apartments that are around the corner, you know, this is an ideal place. This would not have happened if we had all of our bananas together two, three years ago. They wouldn't have come in to try to build this and buy this house to do this, it didn't exist. We left too many holes in our development back then, and for builders to come in, and developers to come in, and not be penalized for us doing that, I think's wrong. This is a nice solution to the problem, I believe, with the, what they actually want to do with this, the fourplexes and stuff, rather than, and it's a transition, it's not going to, if you change this one spot, it's not going to affect the whole block down the road, there's only one other house there. And it's been there forever, it'll probably still be, it's a beautiful home. And it's not going to change, you know, the whole area, it's probably best use, and we need to look at best use. And these people that own this piece of property have the right to build what the best use. And I agree with, this is the best use.
Do you have anyone else that would like to speak on this matter?
I have one last question, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Sylvia, you were saying that at some point, you had a lot of public comment, or a lot of conversation with the public about this particular lot. Is that correct?
Not this particular lot. We had a lot of conversation about the downtown core, period. Because the future land use map was laid out all around, and where can these things be addressed, and what needs to be changed, as we're talking about drainage, as we're talking about infrastructure, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so you had a lot of opposition to the idea of doing something like this?
Yes.
From the general public?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is, the staff is recommending denial based on drainage, based on the water problem?
Well, the staff has recommended denial on a number of reasons. One, the future land use map is very recent, and the public spoke, and the council listened and adopted the plan, number one. We're not even six months from that. So, if that's what we're going to do, why do we do it?
Okay, that's one.
One. Two, as we begin to plan for infrastructure there, you know, you have this consideration about P4 commercial. In the general terms, commercial actually uses less water, but it has greater impervious cover requirements, because there's greater parking requirements with mixed uses between an office and a residential. This particular item is residential, and they're intense users, they have high average daily trips per day, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay, so if we vote to change the zoning, what does that do to you?
Well, for us, it makes a change to the future land use map, because we got to fill in a hole.
I got it. I'm talking about just in terms of money, in terms of water, wastewater, in terms of everything you're going to have to do in order to accommodate this change.
It doesn't do anything to us monetarily, from a planning perspective. I'm going from a lot that had, you know, thirty percent impervious cover, to a lot that's going to have double that size, and so we'll need to make sure that we're addressing drainage concerns and making any drainage improvements. There's a limit to what we can exact from this developer, and that's limited to onsite. If there are any off-site improvements that are required, that's going to fall on our dollar, and I don't know what that number is today.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anyone else? All right. I think that's all for me as well. So, would anybody like to make a motion? Because we're going to have to make a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the change to the P4 on this piece of property.
Yeah, this is just an update. So, right now, we're voting on updating the future land use map.
Changing.
Okay, so, could you read that? Do you like to make a motion, and then can you read the item, please?
Say that again.
Could you read the item, and then what you're doing?
Where we at? Three F?
Three F.
Three F. I make a motion to recommend to city council for the request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the future land use destination from neighborhood residential to residential mixed density for the area described as being zero-point-four-three-one plus or minus acres out of the building block twelve east of Water Street, located at 105 Pecan Street, within the city of Bastrop, Texas, and move to include the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five city council agenda for the first reading of the development, is more commonly known as Pecan Place.
Do we have a second?
Anybody wants a second?
Okay, we have a second. Alondra, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Christopher Toth.
No.
Keith Alborn. Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
No.
Patrice Persons.
Oh, God. Kind of eni-mini-mani-mo. No, no.
Say present.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes 3F. We're going to go ahead and move to 3Z.
Let's just clarify the final total.
Oh, it was five to two?
Oh, it was two to five.
Yeah.
So, again, for clarification, you are a recommending body, sort of the public, you're a recommending body to city council. This will be on October twenty-first, for again, basically the same process for the him what y'all recommended to him. Again, the same public hearing is available for citizens to speak for or against at that meeting.
Okay. All right, we're go to 3F.
We have a procedural.
Oh, what's the procedural issue, sorry?
So, there was a recommendation to approve, motion failed, so we need a new recommendation to take forward to city council.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to recommend to city council to deny the request for the amendment to the comprehensive plan and the remainder as written.
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Sorry, who's second? Okay, thank you. Ah, yes, Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
No.
Gary Moss.
No.
Jeffrey Estes.
No.
Patrice Persons.
No. No, yes. Sorry.
Jordan Scott.
I just want to clarify, you're saying no to, because you don't want to approve it? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I think we're just a little confused, because we're doing the opposite.
Sure, sure. So, correct, because it's a recommendation to deny. If you're in favor of the recommendation to deny, then it's an approve, it's a yes. If you're saying no, if you said no on the previous motion, you're recommending, you did not agree with approving it, or recommending approving it. If you're saying no on this motion as well, you're not agreeing to recommend denying it either. So, ideally, it would be that you guys would pick one or the other to agree with.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because the vote changed.
Thank you, Viviana.
Do we need, can we change the votes or no?
Yeah, we'll switch.
Can we start?
We can call the roll again now that it's been further clarified.
Yeah, can we restart from the top, please? Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
No.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Patrice Persons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
No.
And David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, so that concludes 3F. Were we all? Are we all, we're good with this, with this item? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to three G. Conduct a public hearing, consider an act on a recommendation to city council pertaining to the request for a zoning concept scheme to rezone the project site from P three neighborhood to P four mix for the area described as being 0.431 acres out of building block 12 east of Water Street located at 1,005 Pecan Street within the limits of Bastrop, Texas and move to include on the October 21st, 2025, city council agenda for a first reading. This development is more commonly known as Pecan Place.
So again, as we know, a lot of the data was covered in your first case, which again was a future land use map. This is the actual zoning map now that we're looking at. That is being proposed. Again, the request is to go from P three neighborhood to P four. And again, you see the surrounding areas are P fives. Again, the good, needed to go to that is allow the proposed fourplexes. It would stay one lot. Uh, again, the history of the duplex, but again, the main deal is it's gonna take the P four zoning to allow the fourplexes. There's the concept plan, which we've seen. Again, basically the same thing, I guess, is there specific questions? We can answer them, but I think we've covered a lot of the data in the first case and then we still wanna be sure we open a public hearing for is there any specific questions to staff on the actual zoning case?
So to be clear, the previous three F and three G work hand in hand. So as a, as a board, we recommend a denial for the first.
So your zoning should.
So essentially, the zoning is null and void and we will be making recommendations to deny this as well, correct?
Your zoning should be based on your future land use map.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
If we decide to not change the zoning, right?
Right.
Based on the future land use map.
Correct.
What happens in the future when somebody comes in and wants to do a change to a zoning?
Your zoning, your zoning, again, we talk about precedence, your zoning should always be based on your future land use map. So they came in, the future land use map supported it, you would only be able to deal with a zoning change. In this case, you had a double whammy is the future land use map did not support the zoning. So am I making sense?
Yeah.
The zoning has a match, again, as Sylvia stressed, this was a lot of effort, a lot of input, again, the public input, is your zoning has to be supported by your future land use map. If it supports it, we're just hearing a zoning case. If it don't support it, you have to go back and what we did tonight, look at the future land use map through a public.
Okay, cause what I'm thinking about is when we voted on all, all the property behind Bucky's, you know, that it was based on a land use map. They came in, they wanted to change the zoning based on the land use map. So we had a lot of conversation about, do we change that zoning? I mean, we could change the zoning even though the land use map says X. We could change it to Y.
It should be supported by the future.
So, so again, these are gonna work hand in hand.
I got it, okay.
And so we're contradicting ourselves if we make it a recommendation to approve this specific item as opposed to the, the negative in the previous one.
And again, add to the clarification, we had back and forth and Sylvia touched on too. We've had all these different changes. That was a reason we went through this land use map. The land use map is current. So again, going forward, I know there's gonna be these transition projects that you gotta look at on independent cases. We're gonna continually have these for the next few months at least. But again, we were in a transition, the community spoke very loud. We want these areas throughout the city gateway.
I just wanna be sure that based on precedent.
Can you turn your mic on, please? Camera can hear you.
I just wanna be sure based on precedent, what we've done in the past, that we're being consistent.
Well, my point will always be precedence is important, but it's the facts of the day that you have to apply.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do you have anything else from any commissioners?
Then again, public.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone that needs to speak on item three G?
I just have a question.
Just make sure you sign up. Yeah, you, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead and speak and then you can sign up after.
Hi there.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Christopher Lloyd, 1205 Pecan. Uh, so my wife and I are some of the new entrants in the neighborhood, uh, choosing Bastrop for its beautiful historic charm. And so we really do disagree with the removal of the historic home and think more needs to be done, obviously, to protect historic homes. But, uh, obviously, we find ourselves in a very interesting situation, uh, learning a lot of the histories through some of these meetings. But, uh, we have competing pressures between business pressures and business realities versus, uh, fit with the community. And I would prefer a single home, family home to be there, but that's just not the economics of the issue. So right now, if it's eight units, it appears, this is what I'm hearing, that if we can, they can get a better return by building a set of units that, uh, basically can command a little bit of a premium so they can get a better return on their investment with eight units. Uh, and that requires the P four designation. Now, if it's denied, I think we can probably make the assumption they're gonna build six units. Economics change wildly. And so if it's six units, yeah, they're saying the economics have to go to renters. Building something for yourself versus your, building it for owners versus renters in very different quality of home. And I suspect it's gonna not really have that same fit with the neighborhood, uh, versus what they proposed. And, uh, not only that, uh, but once you start looking for rental properties that are trying to squeeze dollars out for rentals, that opens the door to private equity, trying to buy up different properties to try and squeeze dollars out of these types of investments, which is not the type of thing we want in this, for me anyway, in this neighborhood either, either. So really, I feel if we're debating the highest best use of this property in the unfortunate situation we find ourselves in, then I would probably veer towards the, uh, the option that has been proposed by the developers. So that's all I had to say on that. As you said, trying to get other voices from the community, that's just what the newcomers like myself are feeling. But thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it. And just, yeah, just sign up that you spoke or whatever. I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's my concern as well. If they, if we don't approve the condos, is what I'm gonna call them, and we go instead to duplexes that are rented, people who rent property do not take care of the property, generally speaking. And, and I'm, I'm not sure that the neighbors are gonna be as happy with the outcome as they think they're gonna be, but that's just my.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
Can we hold our comments till after public? All right, we had someone, a couple other people want to speak.
I'll speak to you. I mean, I'll echo everything that he said. I'm 1205 Pecan also.
Okay, yeah, if you just wanna state name, address and then you got three minutes.
Yeah, 1205 Pecan. My name is Lauren Stelk. I, 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 I think it's just an unfortunate, sorry, 1205. Yeah, 1205. Um, it's unfortunate, that old house was taken out. I called the developer myself before, when the, when the signs went up. I called the demolition company. I tried to save those windows. I tried to do whatever I could to kinda help with the community, but the reality is is the house is gone. And if those duplexes are built, I think we look back, you know, in six months and think, why did we, why did we stop that? We had an alternative that from my view looks better. I don't really like either of them, again, but if your option is reality of they have an approved plan for duplexes that, you know, granted, could they try and make them look prettier? Yeah, maybe, but they're narrow. They're never gonna look like an old house that was there. So I just don't know how you accomplish that goal. There's horrible competing demands. That gas station isn't pretty. Is anyone really gonna invest money to build a single family home with that light? Probably not, you know? There's tons of problems with parking on the street. Agreed. Like, I, I just, if there's parking back there and we have some other creative solution to say, look, you can't park on the street, great. I would appreciate that in front of my house, too. You know, I'd appreciate another stop sign. I'd appreciate not having so much traffic or people driving so loudly down the street. But the reality of, of the matter is, I just don't see a solution commercially where you end up in a solution that makes everybody happy. And I think if, if we take them at face value, that they are gonna build these properties the way they, they've designed them, that would be great. I don't know if there's any undertaking, you know, legal counsel in the room who could provide an undertaking to say, look, we promise if we do this, it's gonna look like, like this. I understand there's concerns from everyone on the board that says, you know, what if it's something else? There's undertakings, there's legal solutions to help maybe feel a little more comfortable. So.
From a business perspective, they've already invested so much money.
Yeah, their money is.
Yeah.
We're not getting out of that.
Thank you so much for that.
Or an ad.
Did we have any other one, you wanted to come up and speak?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, come up to the mic. Oh, yeah, come to the mic.
Shaun again, and I live across the street.
You have a whole three minutes.
I don't need the whole three minutes, but what other things are allowed in mixed use if you go to beyond the residential? And let's just say that he does sell this to an investment partner who, who knows what that person wants. What other uses are valid in P four?
Retail, I mean.
Yeah, it's commercial. Yeah.
There's retail allowed in, in P four?
Mm-hmm. It's commercial, so.
And our bars are allowed where? Bars?
Oh, okay. Yeah. Um, so yes, P four, it does allow for a commercial, it has to maintain, according to the B three code, at least for now, house form, so, right, the form-based code. So I think lawyer's office, things like that. It can't be a true commercial building in the sense of a, um, shopping center or anything like that. It has to look and feel like a house, but it can have a commercial use on the inside.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the community that would like to speak? Mr. Crouch? You have three minutes.
I signed up to speak. So I just, now I'm, now I'm a little confused with what the definition of P four is versus this residential transitional that you just didn't approve. So when I read the definition in the packet, it listed pretty specifically what you could put there and what residential transitional was. And that's not, it wasn't commercial, so.
So the difference in that is that the comprehensive plan, it falls more of a Euclidean base, so it identifies very specific uses. B three code is a form-based code, so that's why you get more nebulous uses and it speaks more to form. Our B three code doesn't mirror nor match our comprehensive plan, which is why we need to rewrite the code itself so that the vernacular is consistent.
But it would change in the future if they go forward.
All right, yeah, we're good. Do, do we have anyone else from the public that would like to speak for the public hearing? No? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for item three G. And it is up to us for discussion. Do we have anything?
Yes. What is the difference between F and G? What's the, what's the difference?
Again, we're trying to do our best to get there is, you're looking at land use. The future land use map through all the process we went through, identify where you want uses.
Yep.
We have existing zoning. There's areas that's designated as residential and the future land use map is currently zoned commercial.
Gotcha.
You have vice versa. Cities evolve, cities change. Sylvia touched on with the B three code, you didn't have lot size, you had all these different things through all these different processes. That current land use map painted a picture of what we want Bastrop to look like. Now, when you wanna come in with a zoning case, we have existing zoning that allows your use, you just deal with staff normally. When you wanna do a zoning change to something different in that map, you have to change the map. So the zoning should, again, I'm repeating myself, should be based on what that future land use map allows.
Was that F? Three F? Is that what we voted denied a while ago?
Yeah. Yeah, we denied.
Okay, so what's G? How's G different from F?
G is now the actual, let me go to the actual map. So you have two maps. You have the future land use map. Now you have a zoning map. What's being proposed now is a zoning map. Does zoning change, which last we have, we call it zoning, zoning is really place types. This zoning change is no longer a request for zoning change, is not supported by the previous case of leaving it as it is. If you had changed or approved the first case, now the future land use map would support this change. So denied doesn't support it, approved would support it.
So Doc, to, just so I understand this properly, um, for this to move forward, they would have to have success, the developer would have to have success on both F and G.
Exactly, that's why.
Basically, we're, we're really, this is a moot point right now. Our vote would be illogical if it's not consistent with what we just voted on. Do I understand?
Again, I don't wanna stress, we talk about money, again, I don't wanna stress. When we say highest and best use, the key word is best. Sylvia touched on it, but we're here about community, we're on community input, that's the purpose of board, is to hear these public hearings and deal. Again, that's the deal with what you're asking is, the first case we heard, that case had to be approved to support a zoning change. You denied the future land use map, you can't support this zoning change without that map change.
So we have to, we have to deny?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have to.
Well, you, you won't support a future land use map. And it'd be, I guess you'd have to justify, why would you approve a zoning change that doesn't support your future land use map? And you can't go from use on one case, other use cases, all of them are uses.
I'd like to make a motion. Thank you. If we're ready. Okay. Uh, I want to make a recommendation to the city council to deny the request for a zoning concept scheme to rezone the project site from P three to P four mix.
Second. Can we call the roll, please?
Yes, Christopher Toth.
So to clarify, a yes vote is a vote to deny, yes. I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
That's a no.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
No.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
And again, just for the public information, by the way, this will go for another process. You're, again, you're a recommending body to city council and it'll be on October 21st for basically the same process before city council.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item three H. Consider an act on a recommendation to the city council regarding a warrant request to allow modified parking space dimension of nine foot eighteen by eighteen foot on 0.431 acres out of building block 12 east of Water Street located at 1,005 Pecan Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas. This development is more commonly known as Pecan Place.
So this one becomes interesting because it's based on the previous first two cases being approved. Since those cases weren't approved, I would really propose, suggest, instead of just not taking action, again, this goes to city council, is you deny it with understanding, part of the council process, if council takes different action, they can try to approve or deny based on your recommendation. But really, since the previous two cases were not approved, this parking warrant is based on this, on the two previous cases, is deny it, let the council take it from there.
Yeah, I would say, man, maybe this is a miss on our part. We never considered not, just approving the zoning and then just not approving the parking. That could have changed out, or that could have changed how many units they could have put in, correct? Cause they were already asking for credits by putting in the parking spaces with the fancy drainage system in it.
So the parking spaces, again, clarification, again, we're not, I wanna be honest, sure, we're not really against the nine by eighteen. The problem is the nine by eighteen and we're tied to this site plan.
Yes, of course, but.
But the parking, number of parking spaces is not changing, it's the size of parking. But the parking, number of parking spaces is not changing, it's the size of parking.
Of course, but they have to lower the, the size to accommodate the parking spaces to fit like lot lines and stuff, because that's a small lot to be fitting.
Well, they're trying to get there with eighty percent lot coverage, and again, we support the nine by eighteen because it reduces impervious surface.
Okay, do you think, and this, I don't want to go, I mean, we've been here forever, I don't want to keep us forever. If we, and if city council, let's say they had a change of heart and they wanted to approve it, and they denied the reduction of the parking size, would that force them to lower the amount of units that they put in because they can't accommodate parking?
If they can't.
Yeah, I think they wouldn't be able to make drainage work if they had those large parking sites. Because it's a ten, well, I think it was like a ten percent reduction or something like that. I mean, that's, that's doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start looking at lot coverage and stuff, ten percent of a almost a half acre lot, I mean, that's a pretty significant portion. Maybe that's just something for council to consider, hey, we can get something nicer in there, but we don't want the parking reduction, so you're gonna have to accommodate, but.
You do realize that the city council can do whatever they want to do?
Of course.
We just recommend it.
Of course.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's it.
And part of denying it tonight lets council take actually action, action on that item.
All right.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we table this, next one.
Well, here's the problem is you.
We have to make a recommendation. Yeah, we gotta do a.
Again, out of benefit to everybody involved, if you deny it, they would have to come back to you.
Yeah, you're right. We're getting ahead of ourselves. We'd like to open a public comment for 3H. Come on, you got another, you got a fresh three.
I don't have, I don't care, you know, how pretty it is or not pretty. I am so concerned about the traffic and the accidents and all the school kids and the moms trying to get them there, and the trucks, the big gasoline trucks that are there all the time, the coke trucks, the, all the suppliers that are in there. So, my question is, why do you have to have your egress on Pecan? You could buy something. Right behind them, they have, right behind them, they have right of way.
Hey, can, can we keep the comments to the, to the board, please? Ma'am. Ma'am. Excuse me, do you mind if we keep the comments to the board, please? Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, that, that was my question, and I think you answered my other question, just if you squeeze them down, that doesn't give them more spaces. Yeah, it's just impervious cover. So, that was my question all along was, I honestly believe a traffic study would not support this in any way. So, I don't care how big or small it is, I care about how much traffic empties there. So, that's my point.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this? No? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for item 3H. Do we have any comments? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we table 3H.
Do we have a second?
No. No, we can't do that? I thought we were gonna, I thought that was what was recommended by the staff.
So, this one.
I'm sorry, I'm just tired, everybody.
So, the visual is you had, you had three cases tonight, the land, future land use map you denied. You have the zoning case which was denied.
Yep.
Staff deal, just to move it forward properly, it's hard to approve a parking for a case to be denied. And the problem, if you, city council can still take action on your warrants. Is if you deny, deny tonight, council, they approve the zoning and approve the warrants. If you table the warrants, we gotta bring the warrants back to you. So, basically, what I'm saying is recommending, put the authority in the city hands, contingent upon what city council does on the zoning. Otherwise, we gotta bring it, they have to come back to you for the parking, they have to go through the process, so. Let city council, based on what they do in the future land use map and the zoning change, deny or approve the warrant for parking.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the warrant request.
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Uh, yes, I just want to confirm, Chris was the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. Christopher Toth.
Once again, voting yes means you're voting to deny. Yes?
Yes, sir. Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss. Jeffrey Essens.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes 3H. We're going to return to 3D now. Conduct a public hearing, consider an act on making a recommendation to the city. Do what? Oh, five-minute recess? Yeah, we can get, do we want a five-minute recess?
I wanna go.
I'm. Yeah, we're, I'm ready to rock out. No, okay. Okay, so. Really quick, 3D, conduct a public hearing, consider an act on making a recommendation to city council to amend the Bastrop Code of ordinances, Chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 code by changing the P1 nature place type to P1 parks and open space and adopting the new and revised code provisions in relation to the P1 parks and open space place type and civic space. And a move to include on the October 21st, 2025 city council meeting agenda for the first reading.
Good evening, commissioners. I have been before you plenty of ti, um, what is? Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Been before you plenty of times regarding this item, so I will not be long before you. Okay, so, as you know, we adopted our parkland ordinance in March of this year. We're in the second phase of just cleaning up the code so that the code mirrors and complements the Chapter 10 Parkland Ordinance, and then the third phase of this will be when we come back for rezoning of said properties, hopefully to P1 parks and open space. The changes we included is we've created a new form or use for public parkland. We restricted civic spaces or forms, AKA uses from P1. We modified sign and lining types for P1, or in P1 for greater flexibility. Here, we clarified P1 nature to become P1 parks and open space. We added a reference to Chapter 10 and the plating procedures. Here, we went ahead and changed P1 nature to P1 parks and open space, and we also clarified in the description that said P1 should be for public parkland and open space. Here, we recommended that civic space be ten, the ten percent be preferred, not required. And then, in the PDD portion of the code, we once again added a reference for Chapter 10. We did give a provision if the developer wants to do some additional open space, but we did say that if you exceed the open space requirements, the developer will be required for the MNO, or maintenance and operations, okay. Here, we added a different way to get to the same intent, and that's basically adding a reference to a controlling land use plan. So, originally, you would have to either have kind of a proportional allocation of parkland throughout the development, but I think that if you just do a controlling land use plan, it adds for a lot of better flexibility and/or tool to deal with the developer, because you can just refer back to the original intent of the concept. Here, we changed P1 to parks and open space. We also stated that P1 land shall be designated as public parkland and comply with Chapter 10 and be dedicated to the city. And we added standards for when parkland dedication exceeds the dedication amount required in Chapter 10. Here, we went ahead and we revised the explanation of the intent of civic space to be for communal lands or spaces instead of dedicated lands to the city. We also clarified which B3 code standards civic space should comply with. And civic space is no longer mandatory dedication, and it doesn't require DRC action. So, it's, it's an option a developer can choose. It's going to be privately maintained essentially. It's not something the city will mandate, and the developer can kind of choose where to incorporate it in their development. Because we'll get what we want through the exaction tool we have in Chapter 10, essentially. Here, we modified the civic space criteria so that it's once again encouraged, not required. We softened the civic space to be suggested, not mandatory. We also removed the 1320 farm lot grid reference since we removed the grid in its entirety when we amended the master transportation plan earlier this year. And we created flexibility to incorporate civic space as they see fit, they being the developer. So, there's just a series of options that they can use to add it into their development. And then here, this is a pretty, I think, neat change, and it's, we modified the process for civic lots intending to be reserved for school sites. So, this had a very specific caveat, and I think that we have a comprehensive plan that we spent a lot of time on as a city, and it talks about how to go about sourcing said school sites. And it mentions collaboration with BISD, so we're just gonna go ahead and codify that and state that when selecting a school site in civic space, that there should be a collaboration piece with BISD. We didn't include a definitive metric because you can't exact if you don't have a metric. And it's not that that metric will be static, it just gives us kind of like a launchpad to work from. So, whenever you have an exaction metric codified in your code, you have a tool now to negotiate with. If you don't have anything, then you can't really require anything, so we left a metric there for how large the school site should be. We modified the, we modified the removal of private improvements from P1 parks and open space, but they'll still be allowed the option, and of course, they will once again be privately maintained by the developer property owner. Here's where we added all of the lighting options in P1, and that's just to accommodate supplier budgetary needs, so just whatever is available and most affordable for the city, that's what I want us to be able to get. And then, of course, the regulatory piece per preserving the dark skies, that's not really found in how the light looks, it's found in your photometric plan, your lumen count, your color temperature. And that part of the code, we're not touching, so. If, if anyone worried about these different lighting types, not meaning dark skies, they're separate and a part of how you get there. And here, we added just a reference to Chapter 10 in the Public Realm Development Standards, so that, once again, we're being harmonious throughout the code, pointing to the right code, so it's easy for people to navigate as much as possible. And then here, we modified definitions for civic space, parkland, and open space to clarify intent. All right. And then this is, of course, our next phase. It's when I come back to you with an awesome rezoning map, and then we will be in compliance with our comprehensive plan, so I'm excited about that. Questions?
Just one simple question.
Sure.
Is there a county or state requirement for how many parks a given community has to have?
So, there is a state requirement that we're supposed to have when it comes to grant funding. And for a while, we didn't have the appropriate amount, but we recently, we did enough designations, we did some new designations on floodplain property we had acquired, such as the property off of Farm Street, the property off of MLK, and so now we're back within the correct amount of acreage that the state, Texas Parks and Wildlife, requires so that we're eligible for grants.
Does that tie in any way with the public schools? You know, they have playgrounds, you know, football fields.
So, those are generally owned by BISD, right? And that's a little different.
Something different?
Correct, because parkland is typically owned by said city, right?
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing for this one, for item 3D. Does anyone like to speak? Going once, going twice, going thrice, sold. Gonna close the public hearing for 3D.
I'd like to make a motion.
By the way, great staff work here, Viviana. Thank you for all the hard work on this.
Thank you.
What is your motion, sir?
Everybody knows that, right?
What's your motion, sir?
Motion is, making a recommendation to the city council to approve amending the Bastrop Code of Ordnance, Chapter 14, Bastrop Building Code, B3 code by changing the P1 nature place type to P1 parks and open space and adopting new and revised code provisions in relationship to the P1 parks and open space place type and civic spaces, and move to include on October 21st, 2025 city council meeting agenda for the first reading.
I'll second it.
Can you call the roll?
Yes, Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yeah.
Jeffrey Essens.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes 3D. Going on to 3E. Consider an act on a recommendation to city council on a proposed amendment to Chapter 10 of the Code and ordinances to revise the minimum number of residential or lot size that trigger parkland dedication requirements and establish minimum park improvement standards as an alternative to park enrichment fee contributions. And move to include on the October, October 21st, 2025 city council agenda for a first reading.
Good evening, commissioners. All right, so the history is the parkland dedication ordinance was first adopted by city council this year in March. And as Viviana kind of went into the background, it was the city's wave gaining public parkland, when we get new developments, come to the city. So, we made a couple amendments to this Chapter 10. The first one is to limit parkland dedication requirements to projects that either subdivide land into five or more lots, or that are five acres or more. So, essentially, we felt it was more appropriate to exempt minor plats in the case of dedicating parkland or paying the fee to dedicate parkland, although they will still be required to pay park enrichment funds. The second amendment we added was the statement that the city, the city reserves the right to inspect and evaluate the proposed parkland dedication to determine whether the location, size, and quality of the land is desirable, and if not, the city may require the fee in lieu of dedication. And then lastly, we added in some minimum park improvement standards, and this is going to be for the case of when developers do dedicate actual parkland and propose to make park improvements in, in lieu of paying the fee into the park enrichment fund. So, that's when these will apply. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We're gonna go ahead and do the public, oh, wait, don't have a hearing on this one. No, I think that's it. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Say again?
A motion?
Is that a motion? She's gonna read it.
Sir, you have to read the motion if you're gonna have it.
I make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
To take action recommending approval to the city council to amend Chapter 10 of the Code of the Ordnances by establishing minimum park improvement standards, setting a minimum number of residential units that trigger parkland dedication requirements defining public parkland and clarifying that the city may require a fee in lieu of parkland dedication when the land offered is unsuitable for public park purposes and move to include it in the twenty, October 21st, 2025 city council agenda for a first reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, can you call the roll?
Yes, Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Keith Alborn. Gary Moss.
Yes. Yes.
Jeffrey Essens. Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes. All right, thank you. So, we're gonna move to the items for updates. Can we keep these short and sweet, if you don't mind?
I have one question. Did we approve the minutes?
Yes, we did. Wait.
We did? I don't think we did.
Yes, we did. 3A. Uh, updates.
You actually motioned?
Community gardens, library expansion.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, this one, the first one's for Mr. Commissioner Barrow. He had asked about community gardens and public parks. I went ahead and looked at the experience Bastrop Master Plan, and community gardens is actually considered an amenity within the parks, so those can actually go in any one of our parks, and what it comes down to is just having that as part of the plan for said park, so. Taken care of. As far as library expansions go, we currently don't have anything in the works. There's parts of the comprehensive plan that do speak to a master plan expansion, but from what I understand, the director of the library, Mrs. Pearson, will be getting with you offline.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
And Perry.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you for that. Uh, 4B, future development-related items.
So, I'll be quick, I guess I'm too far to go. So, the case you heard last month on the, last meeting on the crossings at 95 on 95, just the yard. City council tabled that to a future date, would be the October 21st meeting. For the public and everybody involved, we'll be part of, there's an open house town hall meeting on October 1st, six o'clock at the convention center to give the public a chance. There were some concerns on traffic, making neighbors aware, so anybody wants to attend that. And then, due to us staffing and training classes, we've proposed in October 16th, so kind of mark your calendar, we'll probably send an email early to remind you, is October 16th. P and Z meeting instead of our normal meeting, so. Those are two quick things. October 16th.
To be clear, there will not be one the last week of October, it will be the 16th.
Only one in October is the 16th. Any questions on any of that?
No, we can move to 4C.
Now, just be real quick on this. Again, these are kind of hard to see. I'm just gonna touch on the highlights, because again, you have that volume that kind of slows down, but commercial's still, still doing pretty good in Bastrop. I'm just gonna touch on the highlights on the right. You have, this is our building permit side. You have an HTOT. If y'all are familiar with them, it's kind of like a Starbucks, whatever, they're, they do teas, et cetera. They're becoming popular. That's gonna be right, basically to the left of the barbecue place there on 71. Next one is that Platch are approved earlier on 969, the building permit for the auto repair shop. Grace Chapel, the little church in the Tahitian, little multi-complex building they have, where it used to be the, the restaurant business. They took over that restaurant space for a church. The next one is Cedar Compass. If y'all remember, Canna Wines, used to be, actually, civil, had an open house, or sit with Seal last night, that's there at 707, 709 Chestnut, so neat little family-run business, you know, drinks and, I mean, coffees and things like that. Juniper Integrity Health is a little massage place. Bastrop Wealth Center, again, is that two-story building where they're expanding the existing medical that's downstairs to doubling the size and space for medical needs. Lionex, if you're familiar, the Settlement Drive, that big building up front, used to be, I think, a car lot or something like that. In the very, very back, if you remember, Lionex are in the truck business of covers and Larranolani, they're gonna be in the back building. On your site development side, you've got Scooter Coffee Shop, which isn't going in Cinderell. Cinderell Development, that's gonna be, just as you pass upon, a little coffee shop. Bastrop Grove is right by Taco Cabana, that's gonna be a mixed use of little retail and a proposed break. Huh? I'm sorry. I apologize. Let's apologize, thank you. McDonald's, which again is in the far corner at 969 at Cinderell. Again, HTO had also go through a site process, being a commercial project, so site am, and then you approved, we approved through staff, I mean, through P and Z and council approved the zoning to allow the proposed monopole at 206 Levers Lane, so they're going through their, you know, review process, notification process, and then it's a little Tahitian village just verifying their zoning was okay for commercial. So, any specific questions or concerns?
Anything gonna happen with the current McDonald's?
My understanding, we're trying to work with them, and I assume they're part of this process, and at some point rebuild that site and address traffic, specifically the traffic concern, 'cause we, they know and we know there's a traffic concern there.
All right.
Anything else?
Do we have any individual requests? Nope? All right, Gary. Item five. Item five.
I hope it's to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.